To order of the Ojai City Council, welcome everybody. I see we have a full house this evening as usual. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protem Blatz.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Will Councilmember Haney lead us in the lead?
Sure will. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Are there any...
Mayor, I just had an inquiry and we have a request to consider item number six out of order just because it would be quick. Is it possible to waive a staff report on that? And then maybe do a quick approval on that?
Okay. Which item is that, number six?
Number six, the historic resident... Because, anyway, we just have a request for doing that.
Okay. There's no objection.
Yeah, we had promised that this would be first. If you're sure that the other item won't take more than a minute...
How about two minutes?
With your support, I'm sure there'll be no problem.
I didn't forget about the promises.
About two minutes.
Well, wait a second. I think we made an in-depth discussion here on...
Okay.
If it gets into a long discussion, we'll continue the item.
Okay, are there any other adjustments to the agenda? If not, okay, the agenda is approved and we will take up that item quickly at the beginning of the session. Right now, we now have a presentation from the Harrison company. Nan, are you gonna do that or is it Jim?
I'm gonna have to put on to Bill Camerio.
Oh.
Okay, Bill.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, staff, Sheriff. I understand you're new to the...
I am.
Welcome aboard, right?
Thanks very much.
Excellent. Thank you. My name is Bill Camerio. I reside in Camerio, California, believe it or not. And I am the CEO of Agarman. We have been your organics waste recycler in partnership with the Harrisons for decades. And here to tell you a little bit about what's going on in the waste industry. We've had quite a few legislative bills passed that have completely disrupted the waste industry. And we've also had a lot of challenges with the whole recycling of cardboard and plastic and bottles and containers that Mike Harrison's gonna fill you in on because of our relationship with China and what they're willing to take from our recycling containers anymore. But I'm gonna focus on the organics fraction. There's a bill that you may know about or may not know about, but you will. It's called SB 1383. And many people think it's a recycling bill or diversion bill from the standpoint of actually recycling something when it's not. It's actually a short-lived climate pollutant that was adopted as part of AB 32, which was the greenhouse gas emission reduction bill. So as part of the climate change bill, they decided to go after five major industry sectors, that being energy, transportation, wastewater, waste, and agriculture. Those were the primary generators of methane in the atmosphere and carbon emissions that were going to reduce CO2 emissions in the atmosphere. So that bill was passed in 2006, and here we are, you know, 14 years later. And since then, we've done a lot of things to change how we buy our electricity and change the vehicles we're having to use today and change the fuel we're having to use today and how we create food and how we manage water. And, you know, whether you believe in the bullet train or not, that's being paid for too through that whole program. And the whole cap and trade was the, let's use a carrot that didn't work, and now we're bringing down the hammer. So SB 1383 is a result of the waste industry, CalRecycle, not passing effective bills to mitigate methane from landfills. So because of all the organic waste that goes to landfills and gets covered up with no oxygen, we end up producing methane. And even though they have great capturing systems, there still is anywhere between 25% to 40% fugitive emissions from landfills. And now because of the technology of NASA and JPL with the satellites, I can actually see where all the methane's at. And it's around the cows and the landfills. So we're next on the horizon. And just wanted to let you know, we have some projects we've been working on for a decade. So having some vision in the future to make sure we protect the cities we serve to be in compliance. We have been permitting the Lehman Era Commercial Compost Center since 2011. And we think we're maybe another couple of years away and might be just on time with that project. So it was a good thing we got started. As you know, permitting anything in Ventura County just takes a long time. We also invested in a food waste to animal feed project in the city of Oxnard that took us a couple of years to also be able to convert food waste into animal feed for pigs, chickens, cows, dogs, and cats so that we're using food waste at the best and highest use for that part of it. So also what's changing is how we're gonna collect the food waste. It's in the trash stream. The Harrisons are working on some new strategies on how to collect all that food waste along with all of the compostable items. So I know you probably go to a lot of restaurants in town where they're now starting to use compostable plates, cups, to-go containers that we're having to figure out how we're gonna get composted along with the food waste, the green waste, the wood waste, the biosolid waste, the dairy manure waste, liquid waste, you name it. If it's organic, it's now gonna have to be composted. Many big institutions like Amgen and Thousand Oaks have gone to zero waste and really only have a recycled container and a compostable container, no trash containers. The new SoFi Stadium down for the Rams in Inglewood's doing the same thing. Some cities are going completely to try and get to zero waste by certain date frames. But at the end of the day, it's really California has decided that California can do better and wanted to take the lead on climate change. And the waste industry's up for the task, but you're now talking about moving 23 million tons of organic waste that's currently going to the landfills to compost centers. Today, there's not enough infrastructure. The important part of SB 1383 that needs to be said is that it's an unfunded mandate. And there are penalties. And there is no off-ramp for the penalties. In the AB 939 bill, there was a good faith effort that basically said, hey, if you tried and you have all the programs in place and you don't make your diversion rates, we're gonna give you a pass. In this bill, there is no good faith effort. And it's because it's being driven by the California Resources Board who's in charge of AB 32. So we have to have all these programs in place by 2022.
Wow.
And the penalty phase begins in 2022. You're gonna have to put ordinances in place to mandate the producers of organic waste to follow the rules. And you can't actually charge penalties to cover the penalties that could be fined of the producers until 2024. So all of this has to happen by 2025, which doesn't seem like very far away. 2022 is only 22 months away. We're going as fast as we can on infrastructure to support Ventura County. We currently manage all 10 cities in the county with Harrisons on the west side and waste management on the east side in the city of Oxnard collecting its own waste. But Agarman is also in 15 counties throughout the state managing over 300 cities today. Agarman was born right here in Ventura County. We're all a family and friends business. And we're pretty excited about the future, but it is a big challenge and we can't do it by ourselves. Collaborating with waste haulers in the cities and the communities on how we're gonna get this done is gonna be really important. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, we had a chance to speak to you about what's going on in the waste industry because it's gonna be a big lift and no one company can do it by itself. So I think with that, I'll stop. Mike Harrison is here to talk about the recycling side and Harrisons and what they're doing on the collection side. He's gonna show you a real cool video about Gold Coast.
Mayor, may I ask a question before you...
Yes.
I wanna ask a question about a compost... It sounds like you're not prepared to handle all the food waste. So you're asking the cities, if I understood you, to have ordinances or... There are people in Ojai who are trying to collect food waste and they actually have a bicycle compost service where you put out your waste if you don't have... For people who don't have a yard where they can compost.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. But we can encourage people... It sounds like it's urgent that we encourage people who do have the yard space to compost to do so so that that waste doesn't go into the garbage stream, if I understood you correctly.
Right.
That's what you're asking for. And those that don't have the yard space, if they live in an apartment or whatever, they can use a compost service.
Correct. They'll use the Harrisons will provide the service for collection. And I didn't...
But wait, do you have that now?
Do you have any pilot programs going on in Ojai today?
Yes, we do.
They do have some food waste pilot programs going today. The infrastructure, we're hoping will be built by 2022 when the law kicks in. And we're pushing the county, so I guess if I had an ask, if you see Mike Powers anytime soon, tell him to hurry up. We've been at it a long time.
Be my pleasure.
Okay, perfect. I have his cell number if you need it. But no, I don't wanna be... I don't wanna miscommunicate on the ordinance piece because all jurisdictions are gonna have to have some sort of organics ordinance within the city that says you have to recycle your organic waste. Because if the city doesn't meet the mandate, the jurisdictions are responsible for the penalties. And you're gonna want some mechanism to pass those on to the generators to make sure that they stay in compliance...
Yes.
...with you to support the state's efforts. So, yes, sir.
Mayor, I just wanna point out, I've already asked the city attorney to be looking into diversion before it becomes waste, all right? And one of the issues is rather than having the food have to go to animal food or composting at the time of expiration date. One of the more successful programs in Europe is to mandate that the food be turned over to food banks, alternative human consumption, sooner... With enough lead time before expiration dates.
Yes.
And he's been looking into whether or not we can have the authority to do that at the ordinance level in terms of diversion is more efficient in terms of beneficial use to human use before it has to go to animal use and composted use.
So here's the good news. It's already in SB 1383. It's required to be done.
So we need to implement that in our ordinance.
You need to implement that. It's part of the food recovery to feed hungry people.
Exactly.
And the Harrisons and Agarman self-funded with the county a grant to CalRecycle to help them get a food recovery program going.
Require the retailers to notify prior to expiration to pick it up so it can be used.
Restaurants, supermarkets...
Right.
To get that food to the kitchens.
Right.
So they can distribute it to those in need.
Exactly. Much better to do it that way.
Absolutely. It's in the ordinance. I mean, it's in the law.
But we need to implement that in our ordinance.
Right.
Okay? And then two more other points I wanted to make. You know, what bothers me about the state, county, et cetera, is, you know, things like the landfill gas. Well, you know, I'm on the board for the VRSD that administers the total landfill. And as you know, they tried to make beneficial use of the landfill gas, but because it's so contaminated with siloxen, it's impossible to do. And the state's doing nothing in terms of supporting research statewide to figure out how to remove that contaminant. So it can be used for beneficial uses.
Right. And you can't put it in the pipeline either.
But in Europe, they do.
Right.
Okay? And the third thing is, don't forget the super emitter sites that the satellites have set. It's not just landfills. It's also like the compressor station on the avenue and some of these oil and gas fields that are also big super emitters.
Fossil fuels, right.
Okay. Do we have Mr. Harrison in the wings?
Yes, sir. Thanks. Thank you. I'm around and happy to answer questions. And I'm easy to get ahold of. Bill at Agarman.
Thanks.
What are these pilot programs?
Thank you, Bill. A lot to digest. Mr. Mayor Johnston, councilmember, staff, Mike Harrison from EJ Harrison. I'm their engineering manager, and I reside in Camerio as well. Just to talk about, there was a brief presentation. I'm not gonna talk about that today. Hopefully, you can get a printout of it and read it at your leisure. But just to talk about kinda where we've been and where we're going and what we're trying to do, just to keep you up to date. And as Bill said, we're excited to be here and we're excited to work with the city of Ojai and making sure that you're in compliance with all these new regulations, which are somewhat daunting. So Bill laid out a bunch of stuff, and it seems like, wow, where are we at? What are we gonna do? But from Harrison, we've been around forever. You know us. We've always been in front of regulation. And regulation is still hitting us every day, and we're still dealing with it every day. We have great strategic partners in Agarman and Gold Coast, and that's not gonna quit. That's gonna continue forward, and we're gonna make sure that all your needs are met for compliance with these regulations. So Gold Coast, for instance, is back in 1990 or even before they started recycling. And they got in compliance with 939 before the regulation of 2000. So this is no different. We're doing everything we can to get everybody in compliance with these new regulations, and we have no other intention to keep you and keep us in compliance going forward. So we're gonna show you a brief video of what we've done at Gold Coast Recycling. The basic message for dry recycling is to keep recycling, don't quit. We have never thrown anything away, and we don't intend to throw anything away. And that's the message that should be presented to anybody that has that question. Back before China and their crisis, we were already planning a new facility that would allow us to keep up the best we can with being able to sell recyclables to the marketplace. Unfortunately, the marketplace has been in foreign markets, but that is what it is, and we're able to still keep up with the improvements that we've made. So I know we're short on time, so I don't wanna delay, and we're here to answer questions, but note that we're here for you, and we're excited to continue to work with you in the city to keep this effort going. Do not stop recycling. That is the message, period, whether it's dry, wet, or anything in between. So let us show this video so you can see what we've done. It might seem kinda hard to see, but it's a business that processes a lot of material every day. 1,600 tons a day go through this facility. So if we could start the video, and I'll step aside. Thank you.
Okay.
Ever wonder what happens to the things you put in your recycling container? They come here to Gold Coast Recycling and Transfer Station. The 7.8 acre facility is located on Colt Street in Ventura. Gold Coast recycles more than 90,000 tons of materials each year. Recyclable items include paper and magazines, glass containers, plastic containers numbered 1 through 7, metal containers, aluminum foil, and cardboard. Since its opening, Gold Coast Recycling has recovered thousands of tons of fiber materials, saving millions of trees. In its three-decade existence, Gold Coast has worked to comply with the state's mandated diversion goals, diverting more than 600 million tons of recyclable waste from the landfill. General Manager George Harrison credits the cooperation of everyone involved for the company's successful recycling efforts. He said, quote, "We couldn't reach these state goals without the extraordinary commitment of the citizens, businesses, and institutions of all the jurisdictions we serve," end quote. Recycling numbers have dropped in the state, and the costs of recycling have risen, but Gold Coast remains committed to meeting the difficult state mandated recycling goals. All materials trucked to Gold Coast are loaded onto our multimillion-dollar, state-of-the-art sorting system, which uses screens and air technology to help filter out non-recyclable materials and to sort the recyclables. Once sorted and separated, the clean recyclables travel up a conveyor belt to be baled. The baled materials are then trucked to markets. In recent years, Gold Coast has added cutting-edge automated sorting systems. This includes the latest commercial model that is a foot wider, more heavy-duty, has two more picking stations, and a second baler. These innovations allow Gold Coast Recycling to recover an additional 20,000 tons per month. Not everything that comes here is recyclable. Oftentimes, trash comes mixed in with recyclables, thus requiring an expensive rerouting to the landfill. That's where you come in. Our goal is for all residents to put nothing but recyclables in their recycling containers, thus saving time and money. China, which controlled 86% of the recycling market, has quit accepting recyclables. Gold Coast Recycling has found other markets for the materials processed here. With recycling in a down market, the cost to divert materials from already overcrowded landfills has risen. Things you should not put in your recycling container include plastic bags, bubble wrap, styrofoam, hazardous waste, medical waste, oily waste, pesticides, dead animals, tennis shoes, and food waste. Please make it your business to be an active and informed participant in your waste disposal, in your home and at your business. The future depends on you.
I have one more question.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a very basic question? If the bottle is plastic and the cap is metal, are you supposed to take the cap off? Or for example, when there's a bottle or a jar with tubes different? And I Googled it, and I got conflicting results.
So the answer is no, you do not have to remove it. The process goes... It goes through a very complicated process of breaking bottles and separating those materials. So you don't have to necessarily do that. You can. If it doesn't get broken with the bottle, or if it does get broken with the bottle, it will go through a series of systems that will separate and suck out that cap through magnets and other means.
But it's okay to take it off, then?
Sure.
Okay. Doesn't clog up the machine or anything?
And, no, it does not. No. We like bottles and... We like recyclables going through the machine. What we don't like is things that shouldn't go through the machine, like hoses and engine blocks and all the other things that we see.
Thank you, yeah.
So, yeah.
Oh, my God.
Okay. Anything else, Mike?
I have nothing else. We're here for questions. We're excited to work with the city of Ojai. We're ready to go for the future. We've already been doing this for many years. We've been in front of regulation, and we're gonna continue to do the same thing. We're gonna continue to do the right thing and help you do the right thing.
I think we have one more question.
So I just wanna state, first of all, I wanna thank Nan, and I wanna thank you, Mike. And just, your company is so progressive and so forward-thinking, so ahead of the game. And as a county and as a community, we just need to say thank you more often. Thank you.
Thank you.
And help us develop these ordinances. Seriously.
We will... We are here, and we're ready to climb the hill, the big hill that we all have to climb. It's still coming.
Right. Thanks very much for coming down and sharing that with us. Okay, under... Let's see, we have... I guess we can start with our public communications before we go... Yeah. You have some cards there? This is the time when we... For items not on the regular agenda, that the public has the opportunity to address the council. Council can take no actions on things that are not on the agenda, but we will listen and refer to staff where appropriate. And because of the number of cards we have, I'm gonna ask everybody if they could keep their comments to two minutes apiece. So let's start. Garrett Clifford, are you out there, Garrett? And Ron, the librarian. So Solorsino, you're on deck.
Hi, my name's Garrett Clifford, and I'm with Ojai Trees. And I just wanted to thank everyone for the decision about Tree City USA and getting us back on track. I mean, 2009, we got it, we obtained it, and 2010, we lost it, but nobody really understood that we lost it. The signs stayed up. So glad to hear that it's back on track, and we're gonna get there. And February 22nd, we're planting trees. And if you want a tree, or if you wanna volunteer and come plant with us, trees@ojaitrees.org. Let us know. We can still get you a tree. The deadline is Monday to order, and you can come join us on the 22nd. It's a great experience. We even serve lunch. Thank you.
Thanks, Garrett. Okay, Ron, you're up, and Brian Aiken, you're on deck.
All right. Thank you so much, members of council. My name is Ron Solorsino. I'm the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley. And just a quick update for you on some of the things we have going on at the library in the coming weeks. I wanna start by saying that next week on Wednesday, February 19th, Don Iwerks is going to visit the library to present his latest book titled Walt Disney's Ultimate Inventor: The Genius of Ub Iwerks. The subject of the book is Ub Iwerks, Don's father, who was a self-taught animator and Disney icon who became the first to animate Mickey and Minnie Mouse. Then on Friday, February 21st, at 12:30 PM, we are going to have children's book author and illustrator Dana Simpson, who's gonna visit the library for a special presentation for young readers and their families. Simpson is the award-winning author of the wildly popular Phoebe and Her Unicorn graphic novel series. So that should be a lot of fun. Then later in the month, we're going to have attorney Frederick Segenfeld of Sieg Law, who's gonna visit the library on Wednesday, February 26th, to talk about protecting your loved ones, yourself, and your assets with a presentation that's gonna discuss advanced healthcare directives, wills and trusts, probate, and more. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, we've actually already begun this series, but we're gonna resume on Monday, February 24th with our new Monday matinees at the Ojai Library. We're screening films from this year's award season nominees and winners. And each screening starts at 11:30 AM. Again, the next one is gonna be Monday, February 24th, and every week thereafter for another five weeks, we're gonna show a different film. So if you have any questions, just feel free to reach out to me if you have any suggestions about programming you'd like to see. Of course, we're continuing our Storytimes, we're continuing our book club, our ukulele club, and all of that. So drop by the library and see what we have going on. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Ron. Brian, you're up, and Dr. Serena?
Hello, council.
You're on deck.
Here with my museum hat on. The Ojai Valley Museum recently opened a new exhibit, 22 Miles, Ojai Valley Landscapes, featuring artwork of the valley by the fine artists from throughout Southern California. The opening reception on February 1st was extremely well-attended with more than 450, four-five-zero people.
That a record?
Yes. Maybe a double the record. People visiting the museum in two hours. Third Friday on February 21st, we'll highlight the exhibit. Also featured, live music by Babette and Bob between 5:30 and 7:30. Family Fun Day Sunday is a new monthly program with free admission on the last Sunday of the month. It kicked off in January with 101 children and adults having fun with bubbles led by our own Dennis Shives. You can imagine how much fun that was. On February 23rd is Hands-on Fast Crafts. It's a drop-in program between 1 and 3. Come anytime during that with the children in your life to bring... To enjoy making crafts at the museum. Thank you all.
Thanks, Brian. Dr. Serena?
Good evening. I'm Dr. Sirena Peladolo, and I am here to thank you for the wonderful courts that you have offered us, the pickleball players, to play as much as we can. We have been displaced from other courts, so we're thrilled to be playing here. Many of you have been there, and most of the courts are being used regularly every day. On Saturday mornings, they're packed, and we really want to continue playing there because it's an incredible resource for many of the players. I would say that it's an intergenerational sport, but most of our players are seniors, so it's a great resource. And I also want to commend our leader and coach, Tim Kraut, who has spearheaded this project and from the goodness of his heart. And it's a wonderful resource for the community, and I hope that we still have them to continue playing. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristen Bell, you're up, and Ron McCray, you're on deck.
I'm here to also thank the council very much for restoring the pickleball courts around the block here. It's a tremendous difference in my life and my husband's. We have limited activities that we can do, but also a tremendous asset to the community. And we're grateful, really deeply grateful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kristen. Ron McCray with Tim Kraut on desk.
Yeah, and I'd also like to talk about the pickleball court. It was put in there, I suppose, without any of the approval of the neighbors or any of the property owners or anything. The pickleball popping is unbelievable. I live down the street there, and you can't relax without loud popping noise going on all the time. The more the pickleball people, the club they were talking about wants more and more people to come in there. And this demonstration garden that they're using, it wasn't meant for that, as far as I'm concerned. It's supposed to be a quiet place. And if they continue on getting more and more people in there, it's gonna be like a circus there, you know? It's gonna be popping, and people will look and park. It's unbelievable. It's unbelievable, the noise. Your brain cannot get used to this popping noise. I live down the street, I can go in my house and I can close all the doors and the windows and I can still hear that popping thing. It goes on all the time. Now, the pickleball people are asked, will they minimize this stuff? Yeah, sure they will. Their response is, no, they can't, because that pickleball would ruin their game. They've got to have that noise. Even if they could minimize it, how would they police it? People are still going to come in there and make that loud noise, and it's going to be disturbing to the neighbors. They can't, it's just really, they're not supposed to be there on Sunday. Last Sunday, they were over there all day long. They were, they were playing and screaming and yelling and singing and having, on a Sunday morning. You know, you can't even stay in your house. All these people live just closer than I do, right across the street, and I've talked to several of them. It's just so annoying. There's no sense that they have to, have to be there. There's, the Soul Park has a place that they can go. They should use that one, you know? I don't know why they're obsessed with this area, it's not for this area, the people around it. I'm a real estate broker and I've been there here for 25 years, and I know darn well that property is going down in value for sure, if no one wants to move into an area with that kind of noise. It's fun, yes, I know it's fun, but not here.
Tim?
I have a question.
Tim Kraut?
May I ask a question as a city manager?
When we hear from the public, when we're done.
Okay.
We have one more, and then you can ask the city manager.
Good evening, council, staff. Congratulations, Ojai, on your job. What I like about this sport, besides being the fastest-growing sport in the nation, it's fun, it's energetic, it's invigorating, it's exciting, and it has allowed me to meet over 100 people in this community that I wouldn't otherwise have met. I've come to know them personally, we have different backgrounds, but yet, we still have fun when playing together. Thank you for allowing us to play here and allowing the community to come together. Thank you.
Thank you. I got one late from Dale. Dale, come on, Dale, and then Susan, you're on deck.
Thank you. Dale Hanson, I live in the city. I'm happy that there's a pickleball court where these people can have so much fun, and I know it is fun, because I've walked by there, and I'm glad that they can socialize, but it is disturbing the peace for the people who live there. Now, I'm a real estate agent, and I know that if I were going to sell, I don't have a listing on any of the houses in that area, but if I did, I could not sell it today for what it could have sold for two months ago, before the pickleball court was there. This is a major problem for the neighborhood, and it's not something where you have any peace at all in your home. It just goes on and on. And when summer comes, they're going to be there late in the evening. So, I mean, I think that, I know Soul Park's ways out of town, but there is a pickleball court there, I'm told, so you have to pay to get in. Well, these people are paying dearly for their value of their homes. I mean, something has to be done about it, it's just not right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dale. Okay, Suzie, you had a question for staff?
My question is this, I know it's not on the agenda, so we can't debate how to resolve the conflict, but was there an understanding that they were not to play on Sunday?
We've never, there is no restriction on playing on Sunday.
Okay, because if there was, I was going to...
There's not currently, I guess one of the things we could talk about at a future meeting is what rules we'd want to put in place.
So, we can assure the public that this will be...
It's going to return at a future council meeting.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, the next item is the consent agenda. Do, is there any...
I'd like to move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, this is motion seconded. Is there any objection to approving the consent calendar? If not, so ordered. We will go to item number six, and I understand we're waiving the staff report, so let's see.
So, we just need a motion to approve?
I think we have to open the public hearing and close it.
Yeah, that's right.
And then we can have a motion to approve, I believe.
Okay, so, the public hearing is now open. Do we have any cards? We do have some cards. Okay, Brian Akins with Craig Walker on deck.
I'm going to pass it.
Okay.
Oh, pickleball people are leaving. Okay. Pickleball people are leaving.
Good evening.
Hi, Craig.
My name is Craig Walker. I would like to share a little information about the Perkins Baker residence, so the public can learn something about the home and the remarkable couple who live there. To begin with, the home is a beautiful example of 1920's Tudor revival architecture. It was designed by William Edwards, a well-known Santa Barbara architect, who designed many important buildings in Santa Barbara. One of his first partners was a young Wallace Neff, who later designed the Ojai Valley Country Club, the Libby Stables, and the Ojai Valley School. After the Santa Barbara earthquake in 1925, Edwards designed many of the Spanish storefronts we still see along State Street. He and his second partner, Joseph Plunkett, designed the Arlington Theater, the Santa Barbara Airport Terminal, the National Guard Armory, and many fine homes in Montecito. As far as we know, the Perkins Baker residence is the only home Edwards designed in the Ojai Valley. As beautiful as it is, the home's architectural significance is matched by the importance of Ojai, to Ojai, of its original owners, Franklin and Margy Perkins. The Perkins were a young wealthy couple who came to Ojai in 1923, when Franklin was 28 and Margy was 26. Like many wealthy Eastoners, they came to Ojai on account of Franklin's poor health. They lived at the Bristol cottages while their home was constructed. Franklin served as the general contractor and the builder with Sam Hutterberg, who designed many other beautiful homes and buildings around Ojai. The Perkins Baker home is located next door to the Libby home, although Mr. Libby died shortly after the Perkins moved in. Inspired by Libby and in spite of his own illness, Franklin jumped into community affairs, playing an important role in the development of the community and the modernization of the town. He served on several community boards where he took a hands-on approach to improving several local institutions. Under his leadership, the Ojai Library went from the small wooden structure that still sits on the corner of Lyon and Eliso Streets, to the present Spanish-style building on Ojai Avenue, designed by Carlton Winslow. Frank was chair of the building committee that constructed the current Presbyterian Church on the corner of Foothill and Eliso, also designed by Winslow. He was a founding director of the first Ojai Fire District. He also served on the boards of the Ojai Tennis Tournament, the Community Arts Association, the Red Cross, and the Ojai Community Chorus. Franklin wrote a popular weekly column for the Ojai under the name Harlequin, and published a booster book called Ojai the Beautiful. This was all over a period of four or five years since Franklin died in 1929 at the age of 35. But Margy picked up the ball, continuing in Frank's position on the library board. She was also instrumental in the founding of the Ojai Arts Center in 1939, the Monica Ross School in 1940, and the Ojai Music Festival in 1946. She inspired many women in the Ojai Valley to serve their community, including my own mother, who was friends with Margy during the late 1950s and early 60s. In 1975, Margy Perkins Baker sold the house and moved to Santa Barbara with her second husband, Morgan Baker. Since then, it has been the home of two Hollywood stars, Denny Miller, who played Tarzan, and Peter Scolari of the TV show Bosom Buddies. Today, the home is owned by Tracy Albert and Carrie Pearlman, sitting over here. Tracy serves on the Ojai Museum Board, and the couple recently opened the house to the public as part of the festival's 2019 Holiday Home Look-In. How amazing is it that they have decided to landmark the Perkins Baker residence? As a city landmark, it will inspire others, not only through the beauty of its 1920's Tudor revival architecture, but also through the story of Franklin and Margy Perkins, who as a young couple did so much to bring Ojai into the 20th century. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, Brian, were you going to cap that off?
Yeah, I just wanted to do one quick addition, because somehow Craig forgets to mention this, that Denny Miller was also the Gorton's Fisherman. And so, I brought Denny tonight so that he could oversee this historic event with us.
Think about fish sticks.
Turn it around so they can see it.
In case, so, Denny Miller, as well as what Craig mentioned also was the Gorton's Fisherman. Think of him when you're getting fish sticks over there at Vaughn's. Again, as it said, we, the Historic Preservation Commission, voted unanimously to recommend this to the council, both as a historic landmark number 28, and also for recognition for the Mills property. We're happy to have the owner here and showing their support, because as Councilman Haney asked, if the owners want to do this, then I want to do this. And that's why they're here, is to show that support for your taking this up tonight. So, I'm just going to leave Denny there just for a minute until we finish business. There we go.
There you go.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
By the way, it says to my friend, David Mason, that's who I got.
Okay. That was all the cards we have, so I'll close the public hearing.
I'd like, in the spirit of gratitude to the owners, really, to approve, make a motion to approve the designation, and also to approve a motion to enter into the Mills Act of Historic Review.
Okay, is there a second to that?
No, seconded.
Moving to second, any discussion? If not, I guess do we call a roll on that, Mr. City Attorney? Yes. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Protem Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Wirick?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Thanks again.
Approved. Thanks for coming down. Okay, we are now, Suzie, to the item you've been waiting for.
For 22 years.
Yeah, okay, this is the ATP project, number two on the agenda, and...
So, Mayor, just one quick thing before we start.
Okay.
I just wanted to demonstrate this pink bracelet that my granddaughter gave me today for Valentine's Day. And I come in this, in offering this debate on ATP with joy and love and happiness, and let's all express ourselves the way that we can and conduct ourselves to the best of our ability. Let's not, let's not fight over this, this is just a discussion tonight.
You must be anticipating something, Randy. Okay, we, staff report, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, and I have just, I have a brief introduction, but I want to hand it over to our Public Works Director, Greg Grant, in a moment. He has a couple slides to go through. But just a brief introduction as far as noting that this is the 35% design review. It's on the agenda tonight to basically go through the project and identify the priority projects and our portions of the project. At this time, there's a $2.5 million construction grant, there are $2.5 million enforced first priority items, so we are anticipating that the costs for those items will be covered by the grant. And with that, I'll hand it off to Greg to walk through that.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. I was just getting rid by a few people outside, because they were saying that I'm the first Public Works Director that has stayed this long and persevered, because it was actually...
Be careful.
It's still early, Greg.
Greg, it's very early. We haven't closed this meeting yet, by the way.
To this point.
Did you feel in any way threatened?
But it's been five years since we applied for this grant, it's amazing, 2015. So, we applied five years ago, I was looking at our packet that we have of all of the council reviews and actions and so on, it's been 14 times it's come to council, and it was made part of that complete street master plan, which has already been three years ago now, you know, that master, complete streets master plan was developed and all that. So, we, back last year in June, the council awarded a contract with ELTA Design and Planning, and they're here tonight, I'll introduce them at the end of the meeting. And so, they're at this 35% review point, and as a reminder, we'll have a 35%, a 60%, and a 90% review at each step per council's direction. We'll have a cost estimate to accompany it to make sure we're staying within it, because we did estimate, like we're saying five years ago, these costs. I think the biggest variability is the, when the low bids come in, we see variations up to 25 or 30% in low bid. It can be difficult to work with low bidders, but if it's properly specified, it comes through. I think it's actually a pretty good system, the low bid, it can really save public agencies a lot of money. So, with that, I'll run through a couple slides here, just as a reminder, the project, the priority has always been what the grant application was. It was pedestrian crossing safety improvements, four of them on Maricopa Highway, which is the only four that are there, and the 13 on Ojai Avenue. Bike lane improvements or establishment on Maricopa Highway, as well as Ojai Avenue, there's not any there now. And then sidewalk infill wherever there's gaps, as well as tree infill to create shade and aesthetics on the path. So, attached to the packet, there is those priorities that was reviewed with council previously. There was the green, those primary, those primary grant items I just reviewed are there, but the pedestrian crosswalks, there's a lot of them. So, for instance, you can see on here where the green is, it's the existing crosswalk. And you can see under the legend, under the legend, where the green is the priority, but orange is second priority, and then third priority is, for instance, El Roblar, is not on the original grant, it was a supplemental item that was developed later. So, you can kind of see those crosswalks established. For instance, at, here at Valerio, the priority is existing crosswalk, but there's also other improvements that are third priority that, per the cost estimate tonight, the third priority would be very difficult to fit in with the existing budget. First priority and second priority appear within the realm. So, that's a reminder through downtown, what's first, second, and third priority. For instance, the, at, as you come into town here at Blanch, you know, the existing crosswalk would be priority, third priority would be adding another one there. Priority is the Kenyatta Crosswalk is a priority. So, we see that throughout the project. This map has been around for some time, and it's on the city's Public Works website, so it's got all the information. If you go there, you'll see the strip maps that have been reviewed significantly beforehand. Sheet two had alternative one and two for different styles and classes of bike lanes on Maricopa Highway. And then as you go downtown, there's more detail. Those are kind of easy to look at, they're the ones that have the aerial photographs and everything else with them, that detail out the concepts of the project. So, looking back to last year already, a full year ago, council looked at the issues that they were more concerned with, and there was direction through council act motions and adoptions at that time to proceed with highway lane reduction. And I know that one has some opponents, but the lane reduction was the one to proceed with, and with the clarification to maximize the use of landscaping in that barrier, as well as what type of landscaping, maximizing the use of trees. And also to coordinate with Ojai Valley Sand District to ensure they have access to manholes, so we're doing that, and proceed with a project demonstration. And that's the one we secured with SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments, for $430,000, we'll be starting a demonstration. We're just having our initial meeting next week with a goal of starting that project in May, so it overlaps while school is still in session, and it goes for a full six months after we start the demonstration. So, that's a spectacular demo. If it were perfect world, we would have had that demonstration a year ago, but in fact, as we have it at this time. Additionally, council directed that the median being proposed, the gateway as you enter town at Kenyatta, would have landscaping as a shrub type, there was some discussion about trees in there to minimize possible view blockage of the downtown businesses. And then to modify the entry to El Paseo, and that's being discussed tonight as well. And down at the arcade to not reduce any parking or add trees along the arcade. And from on Ojai Avenue between Kenyatta and Ventura, not to add parking in that area. So, that'd be on either side, we would not add parking. So, as a reminder, when on Maricopa Highway, the bike lanes will be Class 1 bike lanes at the Y, and they will, it's easier seen in a visual, but there was a request by... at the Y, and they will, it's easier seen in a visual, but there was a request by bike advocates to make it safer to get through the Y to use the landscaped area in front of Vaughn's. You know where that shrub is that says Ojai in it? The bike lane will hug that shrub to connect the Ojai Valley Trail over to the bike trail on Maricopa. Same thing on the other side at the Weinberger Memorial Garden, it'd be a hug in the back there as well. And then it'd be a Class 4 bikeway starting at Correo all the way to El Roblar. So, that's about .6 miles total, with no barrier in front of the hospital, and a two class bikeway that would be clarified better in these pictures. Just to remember, remind everybody, Class 4 is when you have a barrier between the travel lane and the bikeway, a physical barrier. In this case, it's the exact same design from Correo all the way to El Roblar, it's just whether or not there's a barrier there, that actually becomes Class 4 when there's a barrier and Class 2 when it isn't there. And, so that's, the appearance of that barrier is being discussed still with Caltrans, it'll be shown in the 60% review. So, the Nordhoff High School entry and drop-off has been a discussion with the Ojai Unified School District, so I'll show that in a little more detail. But the concept, the original concept to have a new drive cut next to the athletic field for traffic going northbound, I'm sorry, to be southbound towards the Y, was going to enter the parking lot. So, at this time, that will be for bikes and pedestrians only, no cars, and we have a modified entry at Church, which is not as solid as the dedicated bike, I mean, I mean car drive cut, but it's pretty, pretty good, and we have ELTA, the design consultant, here to answer questions on that as well. Keep in mind, the whole drop-off was a concern in front of the school, and we've kept all of that drop-off area as it was similar to what it was.
Greg, can I clarify real quick? So, this is the alternate design that we're proposing now, after meeting with the school district.
Yes.
And that will be part of our discussion later.
Yeah.
Is that the only change? Was it just that, was it just the area in front of the school?
That's, that was the major change, or the, the change from what was approved by council previously.
Right.
Okay.
So, here, here that is. So, here's the more detailed, I think they're a little more schematic-y engineering drawings, these are moving towards the construction drawings, so we're away from the aerial photography, which I think is helpful. But I think we all understand where it's at. I mean, this is Church coming in from the north, Church Road, this is coming in from El Roblar, and of course, from the Y, and here's the driveway cut at the high school. So, this is the primary drive cut to gain access to the school. It's about 15 minutes, peak traffic in the morning and in the afternoon. And so, the concern has always been that when traffic's coming from, from this side, from the Miners Oaks side, and it stacks in to the driveway, and if there's backup in the driveway, this northbound left turn lane is, can be cautious, and if it's stacked at all here, they wait, and that can stack up in that left turn lane. It's very rare for it to kick out past the left turn lane, but it can briefly. So, our goal was to make sure that does not happen, because we'll have this lane reduction, and we can create bypass, you can still have a single lane, and you can have room to bypass, you can essentially stripe the bike lane, you'll see often bike lanes have a dash where you can allow to enter it and use it as a temporary lane. So, that's one way to get around it. But ideally, what the first approach was, and our concepts, was to have a drive cut over here closer to the athletic field that would bring in traffic and it would stack in the parking lot there. That would allow this left turn northbound lane to come in freely. We would not allow any right-hand turn lanes from Miners Oaks here. So, that was kind of the, I guess, the grade A approach, so, but this is our lesser approach, but still feasible, and our consultant will touch on it further, and we can probably slide back up. So, if we take this right-hand turn lane and right where that, in the middle of that lighted area, if we use flexible delineators and stake that line and say, "right turn only," and give them a designated lane into the parking lot, and then traffic, people call these elephant tracks for whatever reason, and I guess that makes sense, but the track kind of directs that traffic, the left turn lane, into this pocket. So, now you've got two lanes into the parking lot, you can still have congestion in the parking lot, which is better solved keeping separated, but it can stack, and there's ways to manage that, and we're trying to work with the school district to help resolve issues in the parking lot. And that's part of ELTA's design scope, so they, we will meet with them. So, that was kind of the way to assure we don't have stacking in the left lane that might kick into that single lane remaining.
Mayor, can I ask a question while this is up? So, Greg, I'm coming, I'm coming down the 33, and I'm going to make a right turn into the high school. Am I correct?
Right.
You said that you're going to put a barrier up that allows a right turn lane only? And is that barrier going to cross the bike lane also? So, I'm going to be making a right turn on a single street, over a bike lane, over a sidewalk, with some form of delineation, a high school kid getting into the parking lot. Okay?
Right.
And that's because of the second-best approach.
Right. And as a reminder, a car always has to cross, but it's true that that driveway cut, we're still proposing for bikes and pedestrians, because I think they can do that without... The issue with the school district is they're saying the parking lot, if you eliminate a couple parking spaces for that drive cut to come in, it triggers a full ADA remodel of the parking lot, which is very expensive.
And then we'll get, we'll get answers on that later, in terms of why that is.
And I believe the school district might be here to discuss that.
Right, that'll be a question for the school district to answer, why that is.
So, that, that would separate the bikes and pedestrians back here coming from the Miners Oaks side, and then you'd be dealing with cars here, but there's, I'm sure there'll still be students that want to ride forward and possibly over to that part, but the majority would drop off here into the parking lot.
Asking questions now.
Right. Greg, what do we, with cars turning right off Maricopa Highway into the first lane, and cars turning left at the same time, as anybody knows, when you've got cars that are going and making sharp turns like that, they don't necessarily stay in their lane, different-sized cars have a hard time making that turn radius. How do we know, I mean, do we have any idea if, you know, because this is obviously a design change from what we've looked at, do we have, I'm concerned, and I wonder if we have any data that supports, you know, what, what kind of congest, I mean, even though they are separate lanes, and even though there's elephant tracks to show them in that other lane, it sure seems like it would be difficult for there to be a free-flowing movement of cars into those two lanes at the same time.
If there is good flow in the parking lot and not congestion here, and like I'm saying, right there in the middle of that highlighted area, delineators here with signage saying mandatory right, so they can't proceed forward. Most drivers following the elephant tracks, like you see in intersections are helpful.
I get what you're, now, what exactly do those delineators look like?
So, the delineators are some, like the recent ones we put on the bike trail, we got rid of the metal bollards, and we went to these flexible rubber. They're pretty tough now, they're amazing, they're rated for 100 hits at 70.
I know what you're talking about, the ones that, they're straight out of the ground, they have a reflector on the top.
Yeah, three, four foot tall rubbery.
So, by essentially with the delineators there, you think that will separate those two lanes enough that then the traffic can't flow freely between the two?
I think the majority of people going northbound in that left turn will feel comfortable to, as long as there's free flow in there. But some people who are more timid might be unsure of that.
I get you.
Most people are going to be accustomed to driving in there, so the majority will work. It's very unusual to have it stack and go outside, so a minor improvement is going to be enough that we shouldn't see the issue.
Mayor, I just, can I ask another question about the same? So, again, I just want to be clear on this, we're, we've created a bike lane, we've got a sidewalk, so we've got children walking to school, we've got children riding to school, and now we have children driving their cars to school, and they're all crossing one another right there at that point. And we're hoping that the other cars coming north on Maricopa are going to navigate that turn all at the same time. I just, I just want to be clear, that's exactly what we're trying to achieve here.
Can we get down the road a little bit?
And, and I think we have a drop-off zone past that point, am I correct?
Right.
We're going to discuss.
There's also, just so you know, it's not on here, though, there would be a cutoff, there would be, if you're coming down Maricopa Highway there on a bike, there's a turn-in for pedestrians and bikes on the sidewalk before you get to the intersection.
Back here in that highlight.
By the entrance to the stadium?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Tie into that sidewalk.
So, that, because I'm agreeing with you, but I think that at least if you're coming down that way, you have an earlier way to go in.
And if I could just add quickly, the one thing I'll say, because I think Mr. Grant's more precise than me, and he won't say it, but the original design was our A-plus preferred design. This is an alternate that we're trying to make work, and...
And we need to discuss that issue.
We're going to discuss that.
We need to discuss that issue.
Okay, proceed.
So, to clarify, all right, bikes are coming, they, they cut in back here, and they're dedicated drop-in zone to the parking lot, to the sidewalk that's there by the stadium, as Councilman Haney just mentioned, along with pedestrians. The cars that want to turn in use the right turn-only lane, and that bollard setup there, delineators will mandate that, or else they drive through them, they could, but it'd be unusual. And then you've got the left northbound turn lane. If a parent or anybody wants to drop their high school kid off, they pull forward, they've got this one lane, and they've got a drop-off lane here. So, they pull up to this drop-off lane alongside this buffer, this concrete median buffer, and they park along this area, drop off their kids, the kids have to walk across that bike lane, which should be very lightly used, in a school day, they'd be all dropping in back here. But when school's done, the, the bike has a nice safe Class 4 bike lane to travel past the school. So, that's kind of the drop-off area and otherwise up front. So, this is kind of hopping up to Valerio, where council requested a two-way bike lane, because this neighborhood is not going to cross over, go up, and cross back, it's a short move, so they, we're looking at a Class 4 protected bike lane that would allow two lane direction, two-way direction right here. So, that will be ideal. We're trying to get that permitted from Church all the way down to El Roblar, but it doesn't appear that Caltrans will allow that. So, here's also, just to highlight, the crosswalk is the priority, has a curb extension here to improve the safety of it, and then it's got the Class 4 bike lane on the other side with a straight run, there's no corners, so there's no need for the curb extension over Here we are at Correo, so this one has the corner on both sides, so a curb extension on both sides, where the Class 4 bike lane is, is in this area, it's the bike lane plus, plus a buffer, and then there's trees or shrubs with the parking lane separating it from the, from the driving lane. So, that's the Class 4. It comes up, it goes through the curb extension, and continues straight along the curb. And then the pedestrian is protected out there, it has one lane to cross, the left turn lane to cross, and a one lane. So, now the pedestrian, instead of five lanes of crossing, they have three, one of them being a turn lane. So, it's much safer for a pedestrian.
Can I ask a question? Are you now at the point where Ben Franklin, that shopping center is?
Speak into your microphone a little closer.
Are, is, are we now at the point where the small shopping center is with Ben Franklin, the bank, the laundromat, the dry cleaners?
Attitude adjustment, this is Ben Franklin over here.
Okay, so my question is this, when they put in the parking lot at Ben, at that Ben Franklin Shopping Center, somehow they didn't get a sidewalk. So, are you able to, what do we need to do to negotiate that?
Thank you for bringing that up. There's a sidewalk infill when it's missing, so you can see that sidewalk added right there, that's what that shaded area is, so there is...
But do you do that by, how do you do that with the parking lot going to the edge of the street?
Right, Caltrans has the right-of-way for that.
Oh, good.
It's being clarified, some of the right-of-way documentation is still being clarified and reviewed by the consultant in Caltrans, but the right-of-way appears to give, like it has on all the rest of the road, there's enough right-of-way.
Yeah.
So, it's there, but it was never used.
So, you can push it back. Okay, wonderful. Great.
So, here it is, as it comes into the Y, you can see, as I was mentioning, the bike lane will have an option to cut up here behind the bike, I'm sorry, behind the trolley stop and hug the shrub, and then up here, it'll cut across that grass area where the Christmas tree is, and that'll allow them, a little safer way to get up to the crosswalk to get over the Ojai Valley Trail. If they're coming from downtown, this would allow them to come up and go by the Weinberger Garden in the back and hop over and connect to the Class 4 trail here. So, that was...
Yeah, that also allows the Arbolata people to go down that, or whatever the name of that street is.
Del Norte.
Del Norte.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and then make that turn without feeling like you're going to get killed. Yeah, that's going to be good. Thank you.
I think most of that area between the Y and here is very similar to what it is, but the shoulder gets converted to a bike lane. So, it's really the median, the travel lane with a five-foot bike lane the whole way. So, I didn't show a lot of detail on that, but we have it if, if you'd like to see it. This one is mostly to show that this curb extension proposed here, there's no room on this side, this is that gateway landscaped area we're saying kind of notifies people, you've entered town, slow it down. So, that'll really improve that crosswalk. It's better right now with the flashing beacons, but it's still a fast area to zip into town until people get up to Blanch Ventura. And then the consultant reviewed El Paseo, and for various reasons, there was a consideration to shut it off or to create a big bull nose. This improves the safety for the pedestrian, so that a car would put on its blinker and turn here, they would be obvious to the pedestrian, and they have to really slow to make a tight turn like that. But it does maintain the grid, the local traffic grid here, and instead of putting more traffic on Canyatta and on Rincon if this was closed off, so it maintains that open access to everyone, it avoids people who want to park in this area having to go up to Rincon, come back around, and hit the dead end in different ways. So, this was recommended by the council.
Actually, the council asked for plans to, optional plans to close, that was the council direction. So, that did not happen, correct?
I thought the council direction was to consider the alternatives and have a recommendation from...
For closure. Well, the previous slides had, consider options for closure, designed options for closure.
For clo, I thought it was for closure or for...
That's not what the previous slide said, but we'll talk about that later.
So, here we are further up, so on the left is Signal Streets, we're at the post office here. So, there's already the four-way pedestrian crossings, and Caltrans, as a reminder, has an overlay with pedestrian improvements on their project. Theirs is just to bring all the ramps up to ADA, current ADA standards. So, they'll be working on ADA improvements for these four corners, especially as people might know, when you walk from the theater across the street, that's a terrible one there. So, they'll do what's known as a blended transition, they'll bring up the roadway to match the curb and improve the drainage at each location. When you get to the middle of the arcade...
Greg, before you go past that, right in front of the post office, if you're walking north on the, I guess that would be towards the drugstore, the way that pergola or whatever, that little, whatever the name of, what you call that architectural feature.
Hiller, yes, yeah.
Is there anything that can be done so that the pedestrians are a little more visible? I always worry that somebody's going to come around that corner and go east and not see anybody, and they'll be stepping off at the same time.
I've seen people run out of the post office to make the light when someone's already started to turn.
We've tried to work with Caltrans because we're trying to get, I think it's called lead traffic, lead pedestrian timing, which would basically turn the white, "proceed pedestrians" sign on first before the green light on north signal, so it gives them a chance to come off the curb and be seen better. So, we've requested that, and we're asked again, we have not got a response on that, but we're hoping they'll take that. And then, so that was the one, the other part is we can put a sign on the side of the building right where the flagpole is there, that basically says, there was some standardized sign that says, "caution pedestrians, blind corner." We could add that almost immediately, the post office was okay with us adding that, we just talked to them about that. So, those, I mean, without removing a historic column.
Right, I know that.
And it's not happening.
Probably not.
No, it's not happening.
Unless the council directs it.
No. Are you kidding? We want to stay too.
Okay, I'll do it.
So, up here at the crosswalk, we are proposing, right now, this is red zone on the right, and there's, we've moved this to motorcycle on the bottom side. It is used somewhat, so right now, it's proposed to be landscaping. So, if they, it is good to have a clear lead zone so pedestrians see better, but right now, it would take up most of that motorcycle parking. So, if, if you were inclined to have us preserve, maybe we should try to split it, I think right now it removes most of it.
Greg, is that an island in the center?
No, there isn't, that's, that median, we're keeping open for emergency access.
Okay, so I've got a lane next to it, that's what the arrows are pointing to, those are vehicles, or, I need on the top and bottom of each of that area that I thought was an island.
All right, so thank you for pointing this out, is that the high, the curb to... Alright, so thank you for pointing this out, is that the curb-to-curb width narrows from the library all the way up to Jersey Mike's. Because of that, we can't fit the bike lanes in there, so this area is considered a shallow area, which luckily it's a very slow area generally for the city, but there's not enough room to put bike lanes in, so...
What are you talking about now? Excuse me?
As you're coming into town on a bike or a car, the curb-to-curb width narrows when you hit the library.
Right.
So right after the library, you'll see the curb kick in, and it narrows, so there's not enough width to keep a separate bike lane like there is from the Y all the way up to the library. So that becomes a shallow from...
Oh, a shallow.
A shallow, yeah.
Okay, so that's a compromise for now.
Right.
Definitely a compromise, big compromise.
I know, there's been some advocates that promoted removing parking, but I know we, council also has a parking committee promoting more parking, so that's a debate, but I won't touch that.
We gave direction on no reduction in parking for now.
And I was a no vote.
I know, but it was a vote.
For the record.
Oh, I feel your pain.
Yeah.
Alright, we're all done here, sorry for the, so as a reminder of that, okay, so then we have, I think this part becomes a little bit more standard, I mean, you can see Jersey Mike's over here, the bike lane and so on doesn't leave room for a curb extension, but on the north side there is.
Greg, to the left of that crosswalk is the Chevron Station, and that connects to the Topa Topa Brewery, am I correct?
Right, Chevron's over here.
Yep.
Uh-huh. And then you go further left to the crosswalk.
That's a danger zone right there, too. There's, that's one of those dead zones in this community where you can't see pedestrians. Is there any way that we can add striping or add something that highlights that specific crosswalk?
Isn't there going to be less?
We had, as the higher, on the third priority list, the flashing beacons at, you're talking about the coffee roasting crosswalk?
Yeah.
Okay. Adding flashing beacons at the coffee roasters as well as this one, yeah, because admittedly, even though we added that overhead, streetlight, it's just not powerful enough to light that area up. So we, if we have funding or if other funding developed, we could add flashing beacons or simply do it as supplemental funds from the city. I think we experienced the ones we've just done for approximately $45,000 or less without the median, but it is approximately $40,000 per crossing.
Okay, we can use the TOT for that. It's infrastructure, yeah, that's, yeah.
Go ahead, Greg. Ignore the muttering up here, we'll get through this.
Okay, so now we're up to Bald Street, this is where Sea Fresh is at, and this is a heavily-used parking lot and a lot of activity over this way, so this is a crosswalk, a new crosswalk added here with curb extensions on it. And that was in the grant as well. This was promoted by bike advocates as a primary north-south on the east end of town, so this would allow bicyclists to use this as a primary way to come down, be a dedicated bike, I mean pedestrian crosswalk, and next to it would be the green bike, and then across the front of the Ojai Beverage Company in Napa, and then take Fulton down to the bike trail. Same thing northbound, they can use a pedestrian crosswalk, the bike crossing, and give them some extra visibility to go northbound and drown. So that is the east side dedicated combo for pedestrians and bicyclists. We're actually looking at doing this at Ventura Street as well on the west side of town. And then as you get out here at Fulton Street, that would be an improved crosswalk as well, so that would give pedestrian enhancements up there on both sides, so it's higher visibility.
Mr., may I request that we are allowed to comment as we go through it, because we're going to forget, and we have the map in front of us, I think Councilmember...
Well, we have 15 cards from the public that we're going to need to get to here shortly, so we'll make you, you know, if you can...
Well, Councilmember Wierig had a question.
No, I have a process question when he's done.
Okay, well, I do...
That is a general process question.
I don't know if you mentioned this, Greg, if I missed it, but the, this is all, this is very critical to get kids safely to Topa Topa School that are on the other side. That's, all of this is part of the larger plan, so that every child has a safe route to school. I think that needs to be, you know, emphasized. This is really...
If we can complete the staff report and get the comments from the public, then we can take it back for deliberation.
And we are right at the end here, I just highlighting that same thing, these are the kind of features that are in this 35%, pulling it together. So this allows, it's oriented towards bike and pedestrians, but bikes come up on the right side, this is ideal for pedestrians and bikes to cross the street, and then they could come back over and up or wherever they're going. Same thing coming down park, they can cross with curb extensions, get over and get onto Bryant if that's where they're heading. And so we did have those secondary priority improvements, I just covered them while we were there, about the post office curb extension, correcting the wheelchair issue, Caltrans is handling that. The modified entry from Ojai Avenue westbound to El Paseo, that the consultant recommended, the larger curb extension and the concept versus shutting the street down. And then a gateway into town that we landscape it and so on as described, so I think we've already covered that. And then we have third priority, and that's where you just mentioned, the highest on that list being RFBs at the arcade, the one you just mentioned, as well as Montgomery Street. And then in the future projects, we have the shady lane crosswalk to that unimproved Allison Lane bikeway, as well as curb extensions on Maricopa Highway, some that we can't afford right now. So I think that is the primary, along with, at the last council meeting, the council approved the truck management plan. So the consultant, Alta, who's here, has just started on that with Caltrans, and that will delineate where trucks go, the routes are, and what curb extensions can be maximized while they're not limiting. It is important to notice that practically all of Caltrans roads are rated for 65-foot, they call them KPRA, the kingpin to rear axle ratio. So the kingpin is where it swivels, right in the back of the truck, back to the rear axle, 65 is a very large truck. Most of Caltrans highways are rated for 65-foot, certain roads are advisory. So 33 and 150 are advisory roads, anything over 30-foot is not advised, but they do it all the time, right? You see trucks over 30-foot. 30-foot is approximately that Jordano's type truck that delivers to a lot of the restaurants downtown. But the 65 are the really extra-large ones, and they take a lot of room up, so if you're going to design roads every turn for that, that's a huge radius, it's difficult for pedestrians. And that's where this truck management plan that Alta's working on with Caltrans, that we'll come back to you and delineate what that is, will outline for us.
Can I have a quick, Russell's question? Real quick. How are we going to integrate the information and public experience from the demonstration project into the design phase that are occurring concurrently? We don't, the whole idea of the demonstration project is for the public to experience and for council to help with that process of organizing that public experience through public process and getting it into informing the design process. I don't see anything about that in the staff report.
The scope included that for Alta.
I didn't see it in the staff report about how precisely the information was going to get to Alta from the public experience of the design process during that same phase period over the next six months or so.
Okay. It's in the scope for Alta, for the design effort, and it's in the scope for the...
But how precisely are we going to organize that information process, that public process?
Doesn't sound like we have an answer for that particular question right at this point, but he understands the issue.
We do understand the issue, and I think we're trying to work concurrently, because we need to move through with the design on it, and we'll have to tweak or redesign several features that we find.
And I would appreciate a plan coming to council to approve that process, because that's really is a council decision, is making sure that process occurs.
Okay, well, when we take it under deliberation, we'll come back to this, we need to let the public have their opportunity. Is there anything the city manager wants to add before I start?
No.
Okay, Linda Harmon, you are up, and Leonard Clay, you're on deck, how about that?
Two minutes?
But yeah, two minutes, we have over 15 cards. Okay, yeah. And ditto is okay, too.
I have a request regarding the two minutes. If someone is providing new information that's essential to understanding the plan...
We can come back to that, and you can ask the question during the deliberation, let's just stay with the, you know, I will not shut them off mid-sentence, but two minutes is a courtesy to all the other folks, so, go ahead.
I'm here to basically support the process, I think it's wonderful, I'm so glad you're going ahead with it. I have a couple concerns from the updates, one is that there's, you're considering not doing landscaping at the entryway to downtown Ojai because of some complaint of one business owner or whatever. To me, it's our city and it's an entry point, and getting people to slow down is one of the big priorities. And as you already had Garrett come forward earlier tonight, I'm also a member of Ojai Trees, and one of our big things has been to try to get more trees into our city environment, not only to slow people down traffic-wise, but make it more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly, to lower the heat impact that we're facing, I mean, it's hotter every year. So I really hope you consider putting in as many trees as we can allow, and all through the plan. And I know Greg's been working on it really hard. And the truck thing, I read all the listings on the website today, and I didn't get a link for the truck study you're doing, so I'd be interested in seeing, is that on the website too? Truck study?
I think it was part of the last packet, but we can make that available.
Okay, because I noticed when I'm working downtown, right now, a lot of those big, really long trucks are parking in the median, instead of, I don't know where they're supposed to park, I would hope it would be behind the arcade and unloading their beverages and beer, because there's more and more beer trucks. Because when they're parking in the median there, you can't see people crossing on the crosswalk, they're really noisy. As a person that works downtown, I'm sure the retailers aren't thrilled about that, we can't ever leave our door open because it's so dang noisy with all the big, huge trucks. So anyway, that was another comment I had, but thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, Lenny, you're up, and is this, is it Diana Blanchard? You're on deck.
Leonard Clay, 412, most Fulton Street. Good evening, everyone, welcome to Commissioner, Chief of Police. Welcome. I too support the plan, I'm glad it's going forward, thank you to Greg Grant and everybody else involved in moving this along in what has been a very tedious process for all, I'm sure. But we got to get it not perfect, but we got to get it as good as we possibly can, knowing it's not going to be perfect, because that's just not possible. What I wanted to talk about is, I mentioned this once before, because I've heard lots of complaints about people concerned about slowing down traffic on Maricopa in terms of emergency evacuations and ambulances. And today, I was in that area, it took me 12 seconds at 30 miles an hour to get from turning right from Ojai Avenue onto Maricopa, 12 seconds at 30 miles an hour to get to the hospital. If traffic was slowed to 15 miles per hour, it would therefore take 30 seconds, an extra 15 seconds. If traffic was slowed to seven and a half, it would still be 36 seconds, so a difference of 24 seconds. And it is conceivable that that 24-second delay could cost a life, but it's highly unlikely. And much more likely is that lives and the health of our citizens and visitors will be much better protected by slowing down traffic. That's what saves lives, not an extra 20 seconds on an emergency run. So again, thank you all for all your work on this, keep pushing forward even if it's not perfect, and let's get this done.
Okay, thanks, Lenny. Okay, Diana, you're up, and Garrett, you're on deck.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for being here, really appreciate your time and involvement and investment in our lovely town. I just do want to express my gratefulness for everybody taking time to consider children, pedestrians, bicycle riders, and upgrading Ojai's travel system, particularly Ojai Avenue, and keeping everybody safe. I am in, I concur with everyone so far in it being a positive reflection for our city to have a safe route and complete streets to get kids to school safely. I've taught bicycle skills to many a child over the years, I'm a league cycling instructor, and I want to promote that for a greener planet. And I just want to say that I think it's a positive change for our town, and I hope that we can continue in the way that we have been going, and it's a positive one, and thank you so much, I'm in support.
Okay, thank you, Diana. Garrett, you're up, and Russell Sidney, you're on deck.
I'm a member of Ojai cyclists, been cycling for many years, I love cycling in Ojai, and I am so excited that we're going to allow those little more timid cyclists to get out there and give it a try, because it's a wonderful sport. But one thing, you go to any small town and you drive by a school, and typically that road is a slow road, it's not a four-lane highway, the biggest, fastest driven-on road in the entire city runs right in front of our high school. So we need to close it down, we need to slow it down, and we need to plant trees. Thank you.
Thanks, Garrett. Russell, you're up, and I can't read the first name, but McCarthy, you're on deck.
Thank you, Honorable Counsel, Russell Sidney Miramonte. I wanted to make sure you knew the state source of revenues for the active transportation program have been verified as coming from the cap and trade auctions, not other auto revenue. This revenue is specifically to fund greenhouse gas reduction projects. The legislation for the program calls for the funds to support people bicycling and walking through safety programs with a strong emphasis on developing safe routes to school. The Complete Streets Committee has a detailed plan for safe routes to Topa Topa, including an addendum focused on the need for safety at key intersections on Ojai Avenue and Maricopa. This addenda is going to the Planning Commission and should end up with you soon. It specifically identifies the need for safe routes to school crossings at specific locations, and so that would be the basis for a request. The request is to please make bicycle highway and pedestrian safety enhancement crossings for safe routes to school a Priority One consideration under the grant guidelines, specifically for crossings at Fulton and Round, Ventura Avenue, Country Club on Ojai Avenue, as well as two-directional access to Nordoff from Miners Oaks, Valerio Church, and Church on Maricopa. This is becoming part of a vision that Ojai creates an active transportation system based on walking, bicycles, electric bicycles, and emerging technologies to safely and efficiently move around Ojai. The system uses an overlay of safety-enhanced routes, the foundation for that would be the safe routes to school, where Nordoff students from every neighborhood have a safety-enhanced route to ride to their school, which allows them to get home again. This would also be true for Matilah students and children who go to all four elementary schools. The result of all this would be reduced local parking in downtown, more desirable ecotourism activity, better air quality, a lower cost of living, improved overall health and fitness, and less traffic from locals. All of this adds up to a significant climate crisis mitigation.
Thank you, Russell. Okay, Mr. McCarthy and Dr. Herb Rogan, if I've got that correct, you are on deck.
Mr. Mayor and council and staff, thank you for taking the time for this evening. I am a Ojai resident and an active walker in Ojai, and I share many of the goals of the, of Mr. Grant and the committee that's put forward this proposal. I think there's a lot of good in the proposal, but what I am concerned about is what is being proposed for Maricopa Highway. And as I talk with my friends and colleagues about Maricopa Highway, I realize that very few people that I know know what is going on. So we are, there is a group of us that are hoping to expand the outreach to members of the Ojai community who are not aware of what's going on and who, if they became aware, we believe would be very concerned. So we have established a new website, Save Maricopa Highway, we have social media, we'll be doing outreach, perhaps door-to-door. We have social media. We'll be doing outreach, perhaps door to door. And we hope to expand the awareness and through that, get a better solution for Maricopa Highway. Again, I don't think it's a disagreement over goals, but I think it may be a disagreement over means that we would like to see improved. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask a question of the speaker?
Yes.
Could you be specific why you, what are your concerns about the lane reduction?
Well, I, I think it's a mistake to take one lane out of Maricopa Highway. I would rather see a smart bike lane creation with maybe a soft barrier, something that gives the bike, bikers, cyclists, a safe way to travel up and down the Maricopa Highway.
I understand that. I just want to know, what is your concern? What, what are you concerned about?
Some of the same points that were raised when Mr. Grant was doing his presentation. It's a very busy stretch of road, particularly at certain times of the day. There is the possibility that we would have development on that open lot. And, and I think we all, those of us who travel and visit Vaughn's parking lot, realize that that part of the intersection is, can be crazy and, and frankly is crazy. So I think it's a mistake. I think there are many good things we can do to achieve safety for walkers and, and for cyclists that don't require putting up a permanent barrier to eliminate that, what's called the slow lane.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, Herb Rogoff.
Herb.
North Signal Street.
Okay, and Kelly Pascoe, you're on deck.
I'm here tonight in support of safe highways for both bicyclists as well as pedestrians and motorists as well. But I also need to bring some attention regarding some potential health and safety concerns, particularly on the Maricopa section. Let me start by giving you a potential real life scenario. Let's say you live in a downtown area and you notice one of your loved ones suddenly has symptoms of a stroke. You call 911, the ambulance arrives, they agree, they put you in the rig, take you to the hospital. You take your right turn onto Maricopa Highway. And it's a Friday night, Nordoff has a tremendous championship game. Now that you have one lane in each direction, the traffic is backed up in both ways. The ambulance, unlike 33 where cars could pull over the side, on the left side, cars can't pull into the median strip. To the right side, you now have cars that are parked with trees. So it's difficult for them to get access to the bike lane to proceed. Now, you might say, I know the gentleman talked about seconds really doesn't matter, but I'm here to debate that. Seconds do matter. You're born with several, almost over a billion neuro cells for your brain. For every minute that you delay getting to the hospital, get life threatening interventions, clot busting agents, you lose 2 million cells per minute. If you have a cardiac arrest, minutes count, 30 seconds count. And a lot of other life threatening diseases such as heart attacks, choking children, people with significant asthma, they need to get the medical care that the EMS cannot solely provide for themselves. So what I did when this all started and I learned about this, I went back and looked at the data from the state repository, the Tims database, which does reports of all the collisions that occur in the area. And I looked at Maricopa Highway. Between the years of 2006 and 2018, December 31st, there were three bicycle accidents. All three were cited to be the bicyclist's fault. Interestingly, they were all people in their late 50s and early 60s. One was intoxicated and one was going down the wrong way. There are no serious injuries and no fatalities. However, when I looked at the data on Ojai Avenue, there, most of the collisions were occurring and that's where the problem seems to be. So I'm not against ATP on Maricopa Highway, but I think we need to be very smart in taking into consideration the public health and welfare of people that have emergencies and need to get to the hospital.
Okay, thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
Kelly, you're up and John Lamar, you're on deck.
Thank you. I'm going to keep it brief. There's been a lot of great speakers here. I moved here 20 years ago, got involved in Bike Agribusiness because of my children. I was hoping that this would be a beautiful town for them to ride around in safely. Sadly, not much has changed in 20 years, but right now we're on the brink of making that happen. I will speak to the fact that I daily commute, my kids do, I do on that, on Maricopa Highway. And it is a dangerous road. There's been a lot of close calls. I can go into multiple instances that I won't bore everybody on, but life and death situations. Keeping it brief, I, I just hope that the people for, what is it called, Saving Maricopa Highway, you know, if they get their way, I hope that they don't have a child's blood on their hands. It's that serious. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. John Lamar, you're up and is it Eileen? You're on deck.
Yeah, I think it's important to thank the staff and thank the council. This is a massive amount of work and I really appreciate all the work that you guys do to help with our community. So the ATP project is a long time coming and there's a lot of important aspects about it. One of them, right now, with a lot of the people here, they're talking about their concerns about Maricopa Highway. I wanted to just talk about an article that was in Forbes Magazine by Bruce Y. Lee. And the title of it is, "What is the Number One Killer of People Ages 5 to 29?" And what we learn is that is road traffic injuries. And this affects mostly young people. This particular article shows that there were 1.35 million deaths in 2016 alone. 26% of these, or 351,000, were pedestrians and bicyclists. So this is a big problem. It's getting bigger. And so I live in Miners Oaks and I know people who will not travel on Maricopa Highway. They will ride their bike or walk their bike on the sidewalk. They will not go on Maricopa Highway because they feel like the cars go too quickly. So let's take a scenario. There's a young person who's, who drives probably faster than most people. And there's a slow car in the fast lane. And they take the fast, the slow lane to speed up, which I've seen somewhere between 50 and 60 miles an hour, just because they don't want to wait for that person. And so the slow lane is used as a fast lane. Well, we happen to know that near Canyada Street, this is how someone was killed recently, who was going by, across Ojai Avenue. And the motorcyclist didn't want to wait for the car that was slowing down for the wheelchair woman. And so it sped up around the car.
Okay, speak to the council, please.
Sped up around the car and, and didn't kill the woman instantly, but later she was killed. And this is a lot of the things that we have to deal with in Ojai because Ojai has been designed for cars. It hasn't been designed to be safe for pedestrians. And we need it to be designed for pedestrians and bicyclists. And so just as what Kelly said earlier, if I was a parent of an injured or worse child and I found out that these well-designed, very carefully considered design improvements for safety in Ojai were stopped or delayed, or the funding was screwed up because of this delay. And I found out after my child was injured that it was because some people didn't want to take a little bit longer time to get to someplace they're going. Or they wanted to lose, or if they didn't want to lose their view.
I'm going to ask you to wind it up.
Yeah, thank you. Or if they didn't want to lose the view of the mountains. We can't be responsible, like, we're not.
Yeah, okay, we get the point. Thank you.
If this were to happen, I would see it as a failure of our community, of myself, and of everyone in this room.
Okay, thank you. We, your point is well made. Eileen? And Kathy Nolan, you're on deck.
I, I think that a lot of the people here are like, what is she doing on the other side?
Which side are you on?
Which side is that?
Well, I'm actually very much in favor of bike lanes and very much in favor of pedestrian access and everything. I've been an Ojai resident almost my whole life, except for a couple of exits here and there. I've ridden a bicycle to school since third grade to Nordoff every day. Through college at UC Davis because you don't have any choice there and into adulthood. I have ridden all over Ojai many, many, many times. I live on Montana Road. I have gone down, up and down Maricopa Highway countless times. I've taken my children on Maricopa Highway. I've, I've been down that road. And I have to say, I think bike lanes there would be very, very important. A lot of the cars take that whole 20 foot section and drive right down the middle of it. But I think there's some compromises that can be made. I think with the center median and narrowing it down to one lane, you are going to get more congestion than you think. I, I don't see, looking at that plan, how an emergency vehicle can get by. And I, I, I don't think that they, that we're considering yet the traffic impact of the Continuing Care Center and that very dense senior housing unit, or senior housing development on El Roblar. I, I believe that has 200 units. There's going to be a lot of people going back and forth out of that place. And I don't know if there have been any studies on how much more traffic there's going to be. There's a lot more patients at the Continuing Care Center. What studies have there been on the traffic there? And the, I don't know what we have to gain versus what we have to lose. Herb mentioned emergency vehicle access. Who's to say what's more of a problem? There, Maricopa Highway has been very, very, very safe over the last 40 years. There have been a few accidents. No matter what we do, there's going to be accidents. But we're, we're sidelining and, and putting in priorities two and three, crosswalks at Drown Street? I mean, that's a no brainer. I mean, crosswalks are a no brainer. No crosswalk at El Roblar? Why? That is a tough intersection. That's why my kids don't walk to school. Because of a crosswalk there and putting a class four bike lane is not going to let me let them go across that street without, without supervision. So I, I think the priorities are skewed. Most accidents are in downtown Ojai. We need crosswalks, we need lighting, and choking down Maricopa Highway for a class four bike lane when there's really not a lot of places to go. You're coming from El Roblar.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to kind of wind up here.
Uh, sure.
That little red light.
Says a minute and 30 seconds.
That's over.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay, calm down.
My, my very answer to Suza's question is that emergency access is restricted and we will get more congestion. Congestion equals accidents as, as it happens in downtown Ojai.
Well, that's not my question to you.
Okay, thank you.
May I do want to ask her a question?
No, we're not going to get into a debate. Other people have an opportunity first, then we'll come back. Bob Quinn. No, Kathy Nolan's up. Bob Quinn's on deck.
Mayor, Council Members, Staff, and Chief Rivera, Kathy Nolan. I'm here as the Planning Commissioner tonight and Chair of the Complete Streets Committee. Our committee was actually formed in 2010 and in 2011 I became the Chair. We actually helped write the policy and the master plan for the city of Ojai and have been basically act as an advisory board, so to speak, for the Planning Commission. And then our recommendations ultimately go to City Council. But I'm here tonight to say that I'm in favor personally of the ATP and I'm here representing our committee, which not only has included other planning commissioners all within the Brown Act. We've had City Council members drop in, members of the Buildings Appeals Board, and always members of the public. So we've had public input for all these years, which I think is really crucial and important. But I also wanted to say that this ATP grant helps meet state goals by lowering vehicle miles traveled, by lowering carbon emissions, and potentially reducing traffic. And then it also meets some of the city requirements, which would be in our policy and our master plan and our circulation element. And also the newly formed Climate Emergency Mobilization Committee meets some of those standards also. And then, and it has been mentioned earlier, but I wanted to reiterate that it really meets the safe routes to school issues. And I think that's super important. And I did want to say that I'm in favor of the lane reduction and I am a mother and a grandmother. And I do have family on that side of the highway, including my grandson. And also, if possible, I'm in favor of option A and that's the entry at Nordoff High School, if that does come back into the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, Bobby, you're up and Jeff, I always worry about the Otter, Otterbine? Otterbine. I was going to say Otterbein, Otterbine. Okay, Bob.
Evening, everyone. My mode of transportation is often the automobile, but I'm also a pedestrian and a cyclist. And I'm here to support the benefits the ATP project is bringing to the users of all modes of transportation. I'm here to express my thanks to everyone who's worked on the, on the project, from the staff to members of the public and the council. I appreciate their work to make our streets more functional for all of us. And I'd, I'd also like to thank Greg Grant for all the time he's spent in educating us about the project. I know he's made this presentation numerous times to numerous groups. And I really appreciate all the time he spends doing it. And, and I appreciate his providing opportunities for input from all of us during the numerous public outreach meetings and presentations that have occurred over the last five years. I also want to express my appreciation to the ATP Grant team for providing the upcoming demonstration project to give us all an opportunity to better envision the plans and to give us the opportunity to help polish up the details. And I, I also appreciate all of the thoughtful comments I've heard this evening. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob. Jeff, you're up and Reno, you're on deck.
Good evening. Jeff Otterbine. I have to come a few more times, huh?
Right, yeah, well, at my stage, that may not help.
So my main concern, as you know, is the climate. Our climate emergency that's happening. I'm totally in, in favor of the ATP because I think that'll get more of us on bicycles and that's a major, major way to help us out on this climate situation. Also want to say thank you for all your work. Thanks to the Complete Streets Committee and everybody coming here to support this. Thank you very much.
Okay, and that's Jeff Otterbine? Is that right?
Got it.
Okay, I'll work on it. Thanks. Reno, you're up and Joe DeVito, former mayor?
Good evening. Reno Rolay, Deloro Drive, Ojai. Welcome. Congratulations, Chief. Thank you. It's really nice to see everyone and I just have to say thank you for all the hard work you do. I'm here to quickly just voice my support for the ATP. I think it's amazing. I think it's a wonderful thing for the community. You've heard me speak on this before. I love the progress that's been made, so I do respect the opposition. I think it's been productive. But I do want to sort of remind my neighbors and community members, City Council, this is an opportunity to correct a mistake. This wasn't intended to be a four lane highway going by the school here. It was engineered as a four lane highway to support a project that never happened. With all due respect, I think fighting to save a mistake, I think we could perhaps put our efforts into something more productive that may end up benefiting the community a lot better. So I think it's incredible. I love the change at Canyada and El Paseo. That's a dangerous intersection. I travel that way a lot. A lot of cars anticipate and they'll just, you know, that someone's going to turn or go straight and they just shoot right up El Paseo. I'm surprised more accidents haven't happened. I think that was brilliant. I really, really sincerely appreciate the hard work, the vision of Suza, Kathy Nolan, and especially Greg. And I would just love to see this get done. Thank you.
Thanks, Reno. Joe?
Haven't seen you in a while, Joe.
Welcome.
Thank you. I didn't hear about this meeting until about 6:30. I really haven't talked to anyone about, you know, what the plans are. I'd heard just briefly someone, I serve in the Board of Hitching Post Estates and someone came to tell us some things about it, but the board never discussed it. I live at, I live at 410 Church Road and I've been there for 43 years. And if anyone has traveled down Church Road, you've traveled down Pyrrh to Ojai, to the county and through the, there probably is no one. to Ojai, to the county and through the, there probably is no one. I've been doing it for 43 years. I served 14 years in the Gold Coast Transit, chaired the Board for four years. I served four years on VCTC and chaired that Board one year. 24 years on the council and five years sitting where you're sitting now. And this is the first time that I have ever appeared before the council in 10 years since I left.
You knew better, right?
Always had a suit and tie on. I also served, I don't know whether you still have that committee, 11, 11 years on the Highway 33 Committee. And it's interesting because of sitting one time and we always had a Highway Patrolman. The people in Oakview and down in Casita Springs talked about the people in Ojai. They, you know, how, how they're rich people, the snobbish and they go down charging through our cities. And the Highway Patrolman spoke up and said, "The tickets we give to people are from people Casita Springs." Okay, I have put over five, 1,000 miles on a bicycle going out to Bryant Street and I have crossed, uh, that road many times on my bicycle, getting down to the corner and out to the bicycle trail. I have also spent, put 4,000 miles on my moped going out to San Antonio School. And highway, uh, Maricopa Highway is extremely unsafe. Uh, and, uh, Dr., uh, I had a former student, Dr. Fred Favre's son, who was walking across from the bicycle, uh, from, uh, from swimming practice and he was killed there. There's, there are two things that you need to be aware of, and this is not a, this, is you probably have had a lot of problems on Pyri or Church Road where you have sets of doubles who go up and they get stuck on that road. Well, what's happened is when the hospital developed the long-term care facility behind the hospital, they put on their, their GPS that you could go up Pyri Road and you could go into the hospital property and you can't do it. And I see people, uh, all the time do that. One of the things that I would recommend that you do, uh, each one of you ride a bicycle down, uh, Church Road and you'll make sure that it, it's paved. And Randy, you have one comment about Marico, and Ojai Avenue, one of the worst intersections there is, is right there, uh, is in coffee roasting and Julia Rose as you try, try to cross.
Yeah.
And, um, I picked up my wife three times, three times a week. She worked in Julia Rose. And what happens in front of those two buildings? There's only one parking place that's painted red and it took me about three or four years to get the Public Works Director to, to paint two parking places because, red, because you can't see west when you're coming down the road. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Joe.
Good to see you, Joe. Okay, that's all the cards I have, so we're going to take it back to council. Uh, Suza, I cut you off a little earlier. It's your opportunity to ask more questions or say what's on your mind.
Okay, I'll get, I'll, I'm sure I'll think of my question. I think, uh, I think it's important, um, I think it's, you know, to address the concerns of, of, um, uh, about the lane reduction. The primary concern has to do with emergency vehicles, as you've stated. And, um, the lane reduction has been discussed at the Disaster Council and both chiefs agreed that it provides no extra hazard as it is only 4,000 yards, approximately one-fourth mile out of an 18-mile drive to Ventura. And emergency services such as Highway Patrol, police, fire and ambulance have also stated that they could easily close down the bike lane and street parking aisle and have a second lane if needed during emergencies. And then the sanitation, all these issues, the sanitation district is aware, you know, it, it's been approved, it's been vetted by every agency, including the school, that, that, that were, that, that we needed to legally contact. It's been vetted. And there are no issues with reducing the lane change that they have come up with. So that, that's the first thing I want to say. And the second, the second thing I want to emphasize is that, um, and I heard Eileen mention that she rode her bike with, with children. This plan is for, um, the novice cyclists, the seas- seasoned cyclist.
Suza should be amongst us. We're deliberating not to.
Well, I, I just think that, you know, they raised issues and concerns.
Right, but you can do that with us.
All right, I'll look over here. Okay, I just want to say that I, I, I challenge those of you who questioned the need to reduce the lane. I challenge you.
You're challenging the audience and that's not what this is for.
Well, but the point is that what, what's missing from this discussion is the vision that by reducing the lanes, by, by putting in protected bike lanes, we're going to reduce traffic. Everybody is talking about how the lane, how reducing the lanes is going to cause traffic congestion. I think it's going to have the opposite effect. In communities that are truly bicycle-safe and friendly, 40 to 50% of the kids ride their bikes to school. That's a lot of traffic.
Okay, that, that are, those are all, you know, we appreciate that. Did you have any questions of staff?
No, I'm going to just, uh, talk, okay?
Well, you, you have. I'll tell you what, I will, we'll put a timer on, but we need to give others a chance here too.
Can we give her three minutes?
Wait, I get my three minutes, just like any other member of the public or an elected official. I think it's really important for those of, I want, I do want to address the, the, the art, the, the, it seems like everyone is in agreement except for the lane reduction. That's my take. Pretty, you know, everyone wants safer intersections, safer crosswalks.
Okay, I'll tell you what, we need to put some order, Suza, we need to put some order to this. Do we have a motion of some sort? What is the ask from staff?
I, I resent being cut off. This is so important.
I know, but you are lecturing the audience and the council, we don't even have a motion on the floor. So I understand you're for this.
Let me finish for my train of thought, which is that I want everyone that opposes the lane reduction to ride their bike with a group of school-aged children during peak commuter traffic. When the, when the commuters leave town, when the parents are dropping off kids. If you can negotiate that, that amount of traffic with school-aged children with a big bike cart with a couple of kids.
Okay.
We've let, you know, with 50 kids behind you.
You made, you made your point. You favor the, the project. Okay, Bill.
Mayor, I'd like to, um, ask a question of the school district that would inform of possible motions, okay? And that is that the assertion is made, um, in the staff report, um, that there was a, a triggering of extensive rework of the parking lot to make ADA at significant costs. If the optimal design was followed, and my understanding, listening to the staff report, is that was why Alta was directed to do a suboptimal design, uh, without that first coming to council for our deliberation on that matter. And so I'd like to know what the basis is for that assertion.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to add.
If you, if you'd like to answer, you know, because he asked the question, doesn't mean you have to answer.
Right.
Well, good evening, Mayor, city council members. I'm Tiffany Morris. I'm the superintendent of Ojai Public Schools. And before I get started, I just want to remind you that our school board was in favor of this. In 2018, we passed a resolution of support, so we're on the same side. Having safe routes to school is important for us. Having, um, kids biking and walking to school safely is part of our mission, where, and our values, where we want environmental stewardship and we want wellness for our students. So we are here to support you in this. Um, I may not be able to answer all of your questions because I'm not a traffic engineer in my day job, but I came to listen and I can bring stuff back to staff and, um, I can share with you where we are and where I think we are right now. So if we had that cutout on that kind of stadium side of Nordoff, we would have cars coming in there and they would have to cross the parking lot and the main flow of traffic to get over to the drop-off zone in front of F-Wing. That's pretty much where everybody drops off. That requires us to do a lot of reworking of traffic inside of our parking lot. We're not opposed to that, but that requires some additional funding. Um, anytime that we are having an installation of new parking areas, installation of new surface over existing parking areas or removal and replacement of existing parking area service, that could trigger, trigger an access review from the Division of State Architecture. That access review would require us to bring our entire parking lot and our ingress and egress up to current accessibility standards and codes.
Could I follow up on that point?
Okay, but that's your question.
At the appropriate time. I, I have a question on that point.
Ask me now. That's okay.
I have a lot, you, you know, this is probably kind of technical, but I've done a lot of parking lots in the private sector on that exact point in terms of having to do an access review. And the access reviews are focused on the, on the act, on the paths of travel, not on the entire parking lot. So they're focused on specific paths of travel issues. So, um, you know, when you, when you get to that, that's, that's sort of something that we all should be doing anyway, uh, in terms of having appropriate accessible paths of travel. And it's not, doesn't involve a rework of the entire parking lot. And so that's what I'm trying to understand.
So we believe that that cutout would require us to have an additional drop-off on that side so that we aren't crossing traffic. And that that drop-off will then do, require us to look at those paths of travel.
You'd think you'd have to have an accessible path of travel from the drop-off zone because I, my understanding is you just need a designated area for, uh, accessible path of travel, uh, for, you don't need the entire drop-off zone to be path of travel. That's been my experience working with permitted development and lawyers who have sued us in our properties.
We've found in working with the Division of State Architecture is that if we want to make one change, it often opens up an entire project for review and we simply don't have a line item in our budget to do a parking lot review at this time.
So is the issue, uh, in terms of doing an optimal design, which certainly would involve pickup and drop-off outside of a highway right-of-way? Funding and solely funding?
Um, we would want to consider the options and make sure that that's a good access. We haven't done a parking lot review of our own to know where that path of travel would be.
See, my, my concern is that we've never seen the optimal design. We've not, the council's not been presented with the optimal design. We've not been able to have a discussion with the school system about an optimal design at the council-to-board level, is my understanding. I mean, I, we certainly haven't had it presented to us. And it seems to me that we ought to start with optimal design and see if we could work together to achieve that before we immediately go to suboptimal design.
Okay, before, uh, Mr. City Manager, uh, what specifically do we, what kind of decisions are we making this evening?
Well, we want to do, to raise this issue because we do want to make sure we talk about it before we get too far down the road.
So is this, is this the main thing that we're to discuss tonight or is this just?
Main thing is, is to, um, to receive the 35% report and the, the, um, report on the priorities to approve those, but then we also wanted to make sure we had council feedback on this particular issue.
Okay, so that, Bill's made a, a good point and that is, you know, does this trigger that? And if it, uh, does trigger that, I understand the school district has, uh, budgetary difficulties just like most agencies do, then that would raise the question of.
And we have an issue to discuss.
Right, well, and the design, you know, is.
In terms of maybe how we fund the optimal design if we want to pursue that.
Well, let's be honest, it might change whether we approve this project or not.
But I, you see the, see the direction.
For the sake of being dishonest, I don't know.
I'm a hundred percent with that comment, Ryan.
Well, let me, let me, let me finish my comment before we go further because our direction was to have an optimal design presented to us. And I, it seems to me that that's a public process that should consider optimal design before we go, uh, as part of this public process. And that, and I think that's important.
Well, opti-, I mean, optimal has to be within the restrictions of these other agencies.
Right. No, wait, 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 wait. I'm going to, I'm going to. I do not think this community should pursue how we address a community need by accepting jurisdictional balkanization when we have an opportunity of looking at things optimal for the community.
So, so Mayor, just real quickly, Bill, I think your argument is, is, is sound. Um, it's, it's a good argument. The problem is, um, they have nothing to do with, with Highway 33, with the lane closure. They don't have a problem if we don't do this.
The activity is generated by.
Just a second, Bill, just let him say.
Your argument is, the only way that we can do this and do this right is if, if, if we require the school board to invest in an alternative entrance and egress.
I didn't say that.
Okay, no.
So I just, I just disagree with your premise.
My premise is that we should work together.
Hold it, guys, Bill. Let me be on your, Bill, let me be on your side. I know this is unusual. What, what Bill is suggesting is, is that if we don't know what the other choice is, uh, then we don't have an opportunity to make a judgment as to whether or not it'd be funded in some other fashion, not just put the burden on the school district.
Correct. And to be clear, our school board hasn't seen that option either. So it would require us to take that option. But staff has recommended against that based on our, our current funding situation.
I'd love to say this is some new problem that just occurred, but I spoke with our city manager how many months ago when this was identified. It's not like this is new. The reality is the school district has not done anything to determine whether this is a problem or not. They just said it might be a problem and we're not going to do it. So we can either sit here and wait for them after months and months and months where this was a problem and it was not addressed whatsoever, or we can move forward under the criteria that is, they're not going to help us with this. Their answer is, don't bring it up. We're worried that the state is going to make a whole bunch of problems. Now, I read it and go, if you're worried about the entire parking lot meeting ADA requirements, sounds like that's a problem that should probably get fixed anyway. And why not do it at the time? But if it's, you can't afford it, you can't afford it. But I'm not inclined to sit here and let this other ATP money move on. We've already tried this. It's been discussed. I knew about this for months and months and months that they weren't going to let us do the cutout there.
But it didn't come to council.
Well, it, we, what are we, what is it going to come? It went to their board and they, they're the ones who said no.
It didn't go to our board, but.
Well, the staff, I mean, obviously the staff has informed the city that it's not an option.
The council and the board governs things, not the staff.
Well, our council can't change whether they have the money to do this or not.
It hasn't been to their board.
Well, but we've known about this for months. I mean, what do you want to do?
We don't even have the cost, so we don't know who's going to pay for it.
We don't have the option.
If it's important to the.
Who's going to pay for the design?
It's very frustrating. I mean, we're trying to help the school district here and it feels very difficult that this is a monkey wrench thrown at the end for something that we offer to pay for as far as a cutout so we can alleviate some of the traffic problem specifically in front of Nordoff as we're closing one of the lanes down. And in the last minute, without a vote from the school district board, it's that you can't do it. And this is a huge problem because I don't trust that design the way I trusted the design we had before. That cutout, when we had this debate in, in 2019 in January, that was a very important aspect to it. And now we're just saying, oh, we changed the design without really any significant review other than I do appreciate that Greg is trying to separate that right turn lane.
Why don't we have an optimal, a community look at an optimal design? What is wrong with that?
Well, we don't have, do we have time for that, Greg?
Well, has anybody talked with the state architect's office?
So we haven't, we don't have a plan to present to them to say.
Well.
So they would say what that would look like.
I suppose if there is a motivation to do this, uh, that, uh, one could go up and talk to the state architect from the city to find out whether or not there's any possible compromise here. I don't think the state architect is going to want to stop a safety project because it didn't improve or upgrade the parking lot. On the other hand, if it's making it less safe, they definitely would say no.
We, we went into a rendition of the problems of the suboptimal design in the presentation.
I, I agree with you, but what you're missing here is the school district had months of this idea in hand and hadn't been, didn't bring it to us. They didn't take, they didn't ask, they didn't ask the architect themselves. They haven't reached out to anybody to find out this is a real problem. They've said no. To me, the answer is pretty clear. The school district doesn't want to work with us on this particular part of the issue.
So if I, if I can just stop because that, that's not an entirely fair characterization. We met six months ago. We actually asked, um, that the city consider a left-hand turn at Pyri because one of our issues is the U-turns that happen, um, from the hospital and they occur right in the middle of our most critical intersection. So we have, um, U-turns happening there. And then when we want to go to the east-end staff parking lot, staff also has to do a U-turn there. So we'd asked the city, if we consider the cutout, would you be able to potentially consider alleviating the traffic on that left-handed, do a, a left-hand turn lane or U-turn so that that traffic is just rerouted away from the main entrance to school? So that's where we ended the conversation. My understanding is that tonight is a 35% review and that we're here to continue the conversation. But this plan didn't address any of those, that left-hand turn issue and the U-turn issue, which is really important to us.
All right, I, if months ago, the determination was, hey, we can't even ask the state to do this because it will potentially kick in all of these other requirements that we can't afford, the school districts told us, then it sure sounds to me like they didn't even want to ask and that it's over. I mean, are we going to revisit this now, months, months? This should have been, if this was a real problem that we were going to alleviate, it was, it's been known for months. And I just feel like if you go to another agency and they say, hey, we can't even ask.
Okay, but are you suggesting that you, this, this suboptimal design is acceptable to you?
No, I'm suggesting that the idea that it's not already been decided, that the optimal version is not going to happen.
So just to be clear, there's nothing to ask because we haven't seen a design. We would take a design to the.
But it sounds. But it sounds to me, Ryan, like you're suggesting that at this late date, because we're not getting cooperation from the school district, which is questionable whether or not that's even an accurate statement. But that's your understanding? That you are in favor of proceeding with the design as it's been redesigned? Or is that going to be the poison pill that says, "Let's scotch the whole deal"?
Well, I think that that is what I need to know before I can make a decision. I think what Councilmember Wirick is saying is absolutely correct. It would be nice to have a community input and a community move on this. But we reached out to the school district, and their answer was no.
Not to their board.
Well, who, I mean, we're here with a staff report that says the school district doesn't want to do it. School district states the proposed additional driveway cut-
Says staff, says staff.
Right.
Okay, but there's no law that says we can't go and talk to the state architect. If it's not a problem for the school, and they don't-
See, I'm telling you.
Just a second. If they don't wish to do this, we can't make them do it, but that doesn't prevent us from doing it.
Susan and I feel marginalized in this discussion.
Yeah.
So it's not that we aren't interested in doing it, it requires further conversation. So when we left this with staff, it was, "We would like to see this problem alleviated. We would consider this." And then we came up with, "Well, maybe there's another option that doesn't require this parking lot redesigned." So we've been working collaboratively. We haven't talked about this issue in six months before it came to you tonight.
I will say, though, my understanding, and I think the Public Works Director's understanding as well from that meeting, was the driveway cut was a no-go for the school district. So if that's, if it's a possibility, we would be happy to talk to the state architect's office.
And have ALTA maybe come up with some instrument, some graphic that shows an optimal design for discussion.
Well, so that would require, the DSA requires us to have a plan, a whole parking lot design and plan.
We could have ALTA, we could have ALTA to do it.
If that's funded, and it's not to say that we aren't considering this, we currently don't have a line item budget for this item. So I can't commit to doing this without further discussion about the costs and funding and what it would require on our end.
Okay.
Maybe we could at least fund the design.
Okay, Bill, Randy's feeling marginalized, so I'm going to call him.
I'm just saying, you know, it's just interesting, this whole discussion about all of the things that now we got to jump through hoops over. But aside from that, if we just put bike lanes in and put something that delineated them from the traffic, we wouldn't be going to the school board. There's a lot of other ways of solving this problem. But we want to optimize and go back and pay for and redo, and we haven't talked about other opportunities. Now, I know you four want this. I'm not against bike lanes, but I'm just, this is the same thing we're running into. Is this just mass confusion over something that doesn't necessarily need to take place? You want bike lanes? Let's go put bike lanes in. It's that simple. That's the argument here. We would like bike lanes on Maricopa Highway. Let's end the discussion and solve that problem, instead of looking for solutions to other problems that don't exist.
Suzie, are you feeling marginalized too?
No, I never felt marginalized.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Okay.
But thank you.
She wouldn't use that word.
Okay, so we need to have some sort of focus as to what the decision is going to be. What is the city manager asking from us tonight?
I have a question, though.
The original request is to approve the 35% report and direct staff to return with the 60% design and estimate. I think as part of that, council may want to direct us to further investigate this driveway cut possibility.
I mean, does staff genuinely think there's any, is there, I mean, is it a viable? I, it's just very, it's disturbing that you, our staff, believes that unequivocally the Ojai Unified School District has told us that they're not going to work with us on this. And now we're going to lose time, this much since I first heard about this, and now we're going to go back and revisit that? I mean, at some point, it's, we got to make a decision and move on.
Yeah, it sounds like, I do believe funding is one of the challenges that there is at that point. So if we're open to discussing funding issues, it's a possibility.
Bill?
Yeah.
I want to point out to everybody that we're doing a demonstration project. It's going to be kicking off in March, if I'm correct on that.
May.
That's going to go concurrently with design development. I don't see how it's necessarily going to hold up this project to have the governing boards and councils involved in making this decision about whether we use an optimal or a suboptimal design. And that, that's just good governance. This is, I'm making a philosophical argument here. You know, these kinds of decisions should involve public process and the elected officials and not be at the staff level. And I would certainly like to suggest that we pay for the city a, the ALTA, and see what ALTA might, you know, charge for this or how long it would take to at least have an optimal design instrument, that was the original direction of council, presented for at least analysis by both the school board and the city council.
Are you saying the design? The city paid for the design, then we'd have somebody to talk about.
Exactly.
To pay for the optimal design, the city pays back.
Yeah, that we would pay for it, and if ALTA's here, I'd like to know if they could give us a quick estimate of what that extra cost might be.
But just so you know, that's not to take it to the state architect. That's to take it to the school board, who then will tell you, "Oh, thank you for paying for that. We don't want you to take it to the market."
Wait, wait, wait. Brian, you're truncating deliberation at a public body before it occurs.
Oh, I hate it when they truncate.
I wouldn't want to truncate public decisions, but when the staff of an agency, I appreciate that you want to micromanage one of the other agencies.
Micromanage?
Come on, guys.
But honestly-
Staff doesn't govern, the council and the boards do.
We now have a question that maybe we have an expert answer.
Could ALTA give us an answer as to the cost of doing this and the time it would take?
Bill, I'm trying to support you.
I think our Public Works Director could probably-
Do we have the person from, oh.
Mr. Mayor, it may be valuable for a brief interest to get the answer.
This is certainly exciting.
Good evening.
And I'm sorry I haven't introduced our consultant that came up today. And this is Steve Freeson from ALTA, a principal, and thanks, Steve, for being here.
Welcome, thank you for coming.
No problem, happy to be here. Believe it or not, I truly am.
Your nose is growing with that comment.
No, you know what? Just as a sort of an editorial comment, I actually do appreciate the dialogue, because this is important. You're changing your community, we're talking about a complete street, we're talking about safety for children going to and from school. But it also has to work with the motoring public as well. The roadways are for all users, so we get that. To your question about what this might cost, we're sitting over there noodling this. And so really, I want to be clear on what you really want. Because when we talk about optimization, there's the optimization within the Caltrans right of way, and then there's what happens on the school site. And so, yes, as soon as you start paving or you touch any type of physical component of the school site, you trigger a DSA review.
Of review, yes.
Yes, they do not move fast. And so my concern is that your ATP funding is not forever. It has an expiration date on it. So we all, and there was a question, I think you may have raised it earlier in the discussion, about how do we integrate what we hear from the demonstration project with our design? Typically, what we do is we come out, we observe, we participate. And I can tell you from experience, we just went through this in the city of Culver City, where we did an open house, and we got feedback from the community that caused us to change our design fairly late in the game. But it was actually on a safety issue similar to what you all are talking about with respect to access to a hospital. It was actually the same situation. Long story short, when we talk about doing this optimal design, what does it take for us?
What would it take in cost and time to at least see a basic schematic?
To do just a basic schematic, probably no more than two weeks. And I'm really spitballing this at this point in time, but $5,000 to $7,000 is what would be my guess.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
And thank you for coming again.
Thank you.
So it sounds like the decision is, is the city, a part of the project, willing to put up that money in order to be able to give Tiffany something that the school district can see and that the state architect could take a look at and say, "Okay, yeah, that triggers it," or, "No, maybe with a few modifications, we could go along with this."
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yep.
Craig, was there already a plan that showed the cutout going in at Nordoff at some point that we've reviewed?
There was a plan, and we actually even had layouts for the parking lot. We had a couple of concepts.
And was that given to the Ojai Unified School District?
And we, it's been some time now. I would estimate a year and a half ago, we had parking lot layout concepts. We're discussing how we would flow traffic through there.
And after the school district received that plan, that showed that cutout, they told the city of Ojai that they were not willing to engage in including that as part of the construction on their property. Is that correct?
Actually, a year and a half ago, they were more receptive to it. They thought, "Yeah, we'll work out something in the parking lot with this drive cut. It'll work."
And that was the staff.
Did that change from a year and a half ago?
Yes.
And when did they inform the city of Ojai that they didn't want to do it?
It was when we met roughly six months ago.
So I'm just saying they have-
That was staff, not the board.
Again.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, that's important.
All right, okay.
And I think it's been significant change to staff.
I don't know if their board has seen that, but the school district has seen a plan with the cutout on it, and subsequent to that, told us they don't want anything to do with it.
Right, it was a previous principal and a previous superintendent. They were very supportive, so now they have a different approach.
But it's the new superintendent that has not been as supportive. Is that what you're saying?
Well, and the principal. I think the principal, yeah, has changed as well. So he had a lot of experience in the parking lot, I'm not putting that down. He was the traffic guy out in the field all the time, so I think he knew it differently.
Randy, you have a question?
Could I please interject quickly, too, that when ALTA mentioned $5,000 to $7,000, that was my main point. I think we're not accounting for a cycle, it's like going to Caltrans, you know? We need to have support, because if you get that and it's dropped on a lapse, there's a lot to continue bouncing it off of DSA and discussing it with them. I get the feeling that's not an easy thing to do. So we'd appreciate some additional support allocated for ALTA to make it move, you know?
And has ALTA seen those a year and a half ago studies?
I don't recall. They weren't, I think we reviewed them in ideas that how we'd flow for the parking lot.
They haven't seen them yet.
Not studied.
Okay, Ryan?
All right, Greg, just a couple of questions. Just a couple of questions. How much money has the city spent today on this, ourselves, in health? How much money?
Besides the grant money?
Yeah.
Approximately $125,000.
Okay, so we're already $125,000 into it. And now we're talking maybe seven to 10 additional.
Right. And that, my TMP might be even additional if the PRIs price 15 for that.
So we got two hurdles to jump here, too. First of all, we haven't had Caltrans even approve anything that we have so far. Am I correct?
Right, they've been concept reviewed.
So we don't have Caltrans approval. The second one is, obviously, now we're going to have to have the school board and also the state school superintendent of architect. Is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
State architect.
Okay, so that's another hurdle that we have to jump. And by the way, I'm not against bike paths. I'm for them. I really think we need them. Okay, so then the last question is, I haven't heard, the discussion tonight is 35%. Where are we on the money side of the 35%? Is that a part of the analysis? Or were you supposed to come back to us with some type of quantitative number as to what it's going to cost to do this at this stage, or is just the 35% on design?
And that was in the administrative report, and I think we cut the slide at the end. But essentially, we said the priorities with some of the second priorities appear to be covered by the grant money. With a lot of questions, when we get the low bids, we get these variances of 25%.
Okay.
So we were suggesting deductive alternates for the second priorities so that we can, if they're funded, we do it. If they're not, we pull them.
Then I wanted to get back to Councilman Wirick's question, too. The demonstration aspect of this that we're supposed to start in May runs for six months. And then the architecture firm's supposed to come back at the same time and give us a 65% update. I guess I should be asking them, do you feel comfortable and confident that you can assess this demonstration for that six-month period and come back to us with a 65% plan? Or do you feel you're going to need more time to do that also?
We can do it in parallel. You know, as a practical matter, you have a roadway that's X number feet wide. So there are a tremendous number of things you're going to be able to do out there. And we do demonstration and pop-up projects all the time, so we're pretty much, we have a pretty good idea of what you're going to see. You have to sort of sit back and watch and paint. But we'll be able to continue on doing our work while you're doing the demonstration project. And just as we've been doing all along through the prosecution, we're today, we'll be coming back and forth. So you'll see me out there when you're going to do it.
Well, that's all the questions I have, Mayor. We can make a motion on this 35%, or if we want to go back to the school board aspect of this.
I'd like a motion just to see what happens.
Okay, let's have a motion.
I'm going to make a first motion, not to the exclusion of other motions by any means. I would like to make a motion that we direct ALTA to come up with an instrument for analysis of the optimal design along Maricopa Highway for analysis and review by the school board and the city council at a cost of no more than $8,000, paid for by the city.
Okay, I'll second that. But I just want to be assured, I already seconded, so it's too late. But just clarify that this will not stop the rest of the project from going forward, right?
And I wanted to suggest that we can do this in parallel. I mean, that what we've got going now, we can proceed with, which is the approach, which will work. It's not the optimal, but the suboptimal. We can do that while working on this optimal that may or may not make it in time. And it can always be added or revised, the permit at any time in the future.
That's my motion. Seconded.
Okay.
Okay.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion?
So are we making more motions, or are we going to both?
Well, I do have one question. Is this out of the-
This motion done, we go on.
Craig, is this going to come out of the current budget for the project? Or is this going to come out of the city coffers separately?
I'd have to look at that. There is money allocated for oversight of the ATP project, and there might be adequate funds there.
And if we take money out, will that, that will outtake money away from any of the second, third priorities?
Oversight and support and potential right-of-way issues that we have to address. But that's difficult to really nail down till we know what the-
And then we got some rough numbers from you guys, but was $8,000? I want to make sure if we're allocating, if-
No more than.
Is that sufficient? Is that sort of-
To be clear, what we're going to provide is a schematic layout of the optimal roadway.
Okay. Okay.
No.
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
But something conceptually that we can then show the state architect and say, "Does this trigger the redo of the entire parking lot?" And then that gets us into a whole different world of who pays for it and the rest of it. And obviously, the school district at this point can't pay for it.
And I would obviously be working with the school district to bounce it off of staff to ensure they're behind it.
Yeah.
It appears as if we were being obstinate, staff, and we truly weren't. We, when we came and we started talking about this, and in good faith, it seemed as if having the car cut out is optimal, but we couldn't really put a number as to why that was so much better than just having the protected right-hand turn lane. So one thing that might be helpful is for us to have some information about why that would be significantly better that would, you know, encourage us, or you, or whomever, to incur the cost. So it seemed like when we were discussing this, that this pedestrian walkway, protected right, the left, and then again, I don't want to forget this, the U-turns in front of campus are a major issue for us.
I would hope ALTA and the school board would have direct, you know, communication of concerns in my motion.
So in our, in our working with staff, it's not that we don't want to do this. It's that this second option, which didn't trigger us to do anything in the parking lot, seemed like it would be a sufficient option to discuss moving forward.
Okay, so what is being proposed is to get enough information to make a choice
Yes.
between the two, and how much is the optimal solution worth, and who pays, you know? And obviously, since we're the ones that are sponsoring the project, then a substantial portion of that's got to be on the city and the grant.
Right.
And I might add, we have a school board meeting tomorrow. And I speak for myself, I obviously can't conference with my board as I'm sitting here. So we have a school board meeting tonight, so potentially, we, I don't know, maybe we can add this as an emergency item, and we could get some feedback from them on where this is. I'm not sure, I just want to point out that-
I don't think there's a rush in that part of it. As we do this in parallel, we'll get the information and we'll share it with you and the school board. And we'll also make a determination of who goes to see the state architect and find out how big the problem is, because we do need to have their answer. But they aren't going to just say, "Oh, you, Crayola."
They got to see something.
Yeah, they got to have something.
Yeah, I would say, we work with the DSA, that isn't something you would do, but we would submit the plans to them, so.
I have a question of Greg, I think, I think it's a question. So we're at 35%, and next time it's going to be 60%. Here's my, what I want to, there's something that I want to see included, but I don't know when to add it or to make a motion to add it.
Can we vote on this motion first?
Oh, that was, I thought you wanted to-
A second, she's, you know, okay, we can do it, and we can divide the questions, so yours will still be appropriate in a minute. Let's first decide.
Okay. I want to see, I want to see the scope of this project, include areas adjac, I want to see including areas adjacent.
Order of wonder, that's another motion.
Oh, I thought you told me not to.
I said that you will still have your chance to do this. Let's take the first question.
Yeah, that's what I thought we were going to do.
Let's do this motion first.
Okay, will the clerk call the roll?
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Blatz?
No.
Councilmember Wierich?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Nope.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Now, Suzie, what is your question?
Oh.
Or your request?
So Greg Grant, maybe you can guide me when I would bring something up to, I want somehow to include areas adjacent, adjacent to the project's scope of work and the design and in the Caltrans permit with a designation that the work is not to be included in the funding of the ATP grant. In other words, there are surrounding areas that are of concern that are not in the scope of the project, but how and when do we address that so that it's, so that we can get, can we get the permits even if we can't fund it yet while we're doing all this?
I think that was the intention when council reviewed the priorities, to come up with the priorities for the grant, the second priorities and the third priorities. So we already have, and it appears that our cost estimates are working out to cover priority, possibly part of the second and not other. So I think as outlined in the report, there's for second, third, and other future work that's no way going to get in there. So those things are already really outlined as far as this project, and when you're talking about areas, especially outside of the corridor of the grant, it's well beyond the scope that, certainly the grant money couldn't even touch it.
Okay, okay. And then my other concern is when we do this demonstration project, and I guess I should go to the school board to discuss this, but I'm adamant that bicycle pedestrian safety education be part of the demonstration project, for it to be a true demonstration project in bicycle-friendly communities where 50 percent of the kids ride their bikes. There's, there's a unit of on-bicycle education beyond just the bike rodeo, where the kids really understand the rules of the road. So I want somehow I'll discuss with, with our supervisor, you know, how to, a way to integrate that into their, the curriculum possibly.
Do we have a motion to accept the 35 percent design?
I'll make a motion to accept the 35 percent.
And the understanding from what the consultant or the engineering firm, that they do this and they modify things as we go, not substantial modifications, but things like the access and the driveway. We're not locking ourselves in 100 percent. If we, if we don't stay with the plan, we'll just have to pay for it if we think it's worthwhile.
I have one other issue. If you would entertain a motion after we pass this motion on this matter. I don't want to stop this motion.
Should I do both items? Direct staff to return to council with the 60 percent design and cost estimate for further review and consideration of priorities. You want to take both of those motions, or?
Seconded.
Okay.
Okay, so moved and seconded, okay. Discussion, further discussion on the?
So I just, I just want to add one thought to this, Mayor. You know, I've brought this up a number of times, that I still think the priority of this whole ATP should have been downtown first. And coming into some of these funding questions that we are now on this side of it, it seems like that might have helped us a little bit to make these decisions. So again, I'm not against bicycle lanes. I'm just thinking more in tune of what's the importance of ATP, and it seems like all the discussions that I've entered into seems to be based on downtown, the downtown corridor being first. So I'm going to support ATP because I think it's important for the community, but I still think our priorities are a little mixed up on it. I still think it should be downtown first. And we also just said on the section that Suzie talked to about adding additional changes, again, Greg, you might want to make a note of this, but I think some downtown lighting on the downtown sidewalks from Kenyatta all the way through the downtown corridor should be something that we might want to look at. Now, if I need a second for that, I may get that.
Randy, I will second that. I think we need to look at all the downtown crosswalks as well as part of this.
But I think that those should be as a bigger priority as anything that we do at the school board and adapting anything to their parking lot.
Yeah, but is that part of the motion of accepting the design so far?
No.
I don't think so, but it's projects that we're going to return with a Measure C project list. We can, we can bring it back.
We won't bring it up later, but we would both like to see that on a future agenda.
And I would agree with that, and I would just add to that comment of not limiting our mitigations for park safety and those pedestrian crossings, not limiting them to flashing beacons. There are other alternatives other than flashing beacons in those, you know, that, because there might be aesthetic objections in the community, and we ought to be looking at and be sensitive to that. There's other options. I'd love, I appreciate Alta, you know.
Okay, so let's, let's take care of the motion on the floor, and then we can have more if you wish.
I have, I'll wait till after the vote.
Okay, we need a roll call on this?
It's just a receive and file. I don't think we.
No? Okay.
Okay. I want to make a comment.
Okay, is the matter without objection, then? We will, we'll receive and file? Okay. Okay, you want to make?
Okay, my comment is, I don't want to leave the listening public with the impression that we don't give the downtown equal consideration as Maricopa Highway. That, in my opinion, from all the discussions that I've had and attending complete streets and, and looking at this plan, the downtown has equal priority. We want the downtown to be equally safe. It's not an either-or. We're working on both, the whole stretch of Ojai Avenue to Elro Blar simultaneously.
Okay, do we, do we have?
Yeah, I feel like, yeah.
Just one more comment, and that'll be that for me.
Comment or a motion?
Actually, I don't think it requires a motion if I could just speak to Alta directly with a comment, if that's all right?
Good.
I want to point out that on the analysis of modified entry from Ojai Avenue westbound into El Paseo, I understand your analysis and your, your conclusion. I want to make sure you were aware that one of the reasons for our, the council directing that that be analyzed was also a, setting up an alternative bike path, traversing east-west outside of the Ojai Avenue 150 corridor. In other words, that was a way to get up into the area past Ojai Valley School and to other parts of the master plan. So it wasn't just a matter of tra, it was a matter of just traffic and safety at the crossing, but also a bike path, a possible setup for safer bike paths. And one option might be to, a way of going through there to allow bikes to move into another area. In other words, what I'm trying to say is if we could be thinking about not just the study area, but how it connects to the overall master plan biking system, I'm not sure that was given to you, and I don't know if you've been given the, the master plan biking plan to, that we've adopted to kind of look at how this interacts with the, the ATP. I'm just asking.
Not specifically.
Okay, and I'm.
Our guidance was to take your ATP grant exhibits and to go to the prioritized list.
Right. And, and I'm just suggesting that maybe some consideration be given to the, to the connections to bike paths outside the corridor. That's all.
Okay.
If I may, I think you mentioned earlier that.
You want to come to the podium?
Sure.
Then the whole community can hear you.
Yes.
And you're on TV.
You're on TV.
I think you made the statement earlier that your original guidance was to close.
Was to at least look at options, designs that would close, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm not, that was the, my understanding of the direction. At least we look at options for that, and part of that was to create scifback, bike path alternatives to being on the main highway, traversing east-west north of Ojai Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
That's all, okay? But I like the design, but it would seem like it's purely pedestrian-focused and not maybe on the other bike path issue as well. And that's all I'm saying.
Are you going to get a motion to include that, or?
Yes, sir. Well.
Well, I don't, I don't know. I just wanted, I guess.
I think that should be taken up with the public works.
I'm really not asking for a motion.
Let's not confuse Alta too much. I just want to.
No, no, but here, here's the important point. This is about bicycles, transportation, and it ought to be looking at connections to our master plan for bike paths that we've already adopted. That's all.
And so the Safe Streets Committee would maybe be a place you might want to visit and talk with the.
So Mayor, one final comment while this gentleman, I'm, I'm sorry, you're.
My name is Stephen Freysen.
Thank you, Stephen. I'm sorry.
Much appreciate the time it took to get here.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
I just also wanted, I know that you're aware of the hospital on the north side of Maricopa.
Yes.
But the high school also, not just a high school, it's also our emergency right-cross disaster relief center. So that's something, I don't know if you've been notified of that either, but you should know.
Thank you.
Important element.
And again, welcome.
Thanks, Stephen.
Welcome to Ojai.
Yeah, you should get hazard pay, yeah. Okay, next topic. Should we take a five-minute break before we proceed?
Yeah, go ahead.
Right, okay. Take a five-minute recess.
Oh, that would just talk about it.
Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself on this because I'm representing other parties in litigation.
I'm gonna miss you.
Sure, don't go too far.
Yeah.
I'll be, I'll be on channel eight.
Yeah.
There you go. Just a brief report, Mayor and council members of the public, on the Ventura River watershed adjudication. The council has directed several actions. First, the council has directed that the city send a letter, which will go out tomorrow, to Ventura, Cassidus Municipal Water District, Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency, and other local agencies joining in the city of Ventura's request, coming to the court to stay all process, including any deadlines or obligations to respond to service that has been filed for at least six months. The intention being to create space for a continuation of ongoing settlement discussions, to hopefully come to a sensible settlement without the need for individual landowners or those who are concerned to respond to the process. Now, to be clear, this is the city intending to join into a request to the court. It hasn't yet been granted. Until it's granted, you need to continue to consult your own individual attorneys or representatives. And the city is optimistic that Ventura will continue to do as their council has directed and look for alternative solutions than a full adjudication.
Mayor, I'd like to read.
Bill, sorry, I didn't turn my mic on.
I'd like to read, for the record, three things in support of this action by the city because it comes from the highest levels of our state government. I'm going to quote a recent speech by our governor. "Today, my administration is proposing a path forward, one that will move past the old water binaries and set us up for a secure and prosperous water future. Guided by science, this new framework will provide the foundation for binding voluntary agreements between government agencies and water users with partnership and oversight from environmental groups. These agreements will provide adaptive holistic management of enhanced water flows and habitats to protect, restore, and enhance California's rivers and delta." In other words, not adjudications. The American, the American Water, the AWA, which represents water agencies throughout the state, has just issued a statement. "We are on the brink in support of the governor's initiative. We are on the brink of an historic accomplishment in California water to resolve longstanding conflicts through comprehensive voluntary agreements that substitute collaboration and creative solutions for perpetual litigation." And furthermore, the Metropolitan, the largest special district in the world, has just issued a statement saying, "A shared voluntary approach to balancing the beneficial uses of water from the Sierra is far better for California's people and environment than years of litigation." Metropolitan commends the Newsom administration for seeking to move forward in a collaborative fashion. And the city's actions are right in the mainstream of where policy development is coming from the highest levels of our state government.
Okay, city attorney?
One final comment, if it wasn't clear. My report out includes a report out of the council's actions that close session taken tonight.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so, in essence, what we're doing is we are supporting the motion or the request to stay the, what, the period of time to respond and file answers?
Right, the period that those who have been served, individual landowners who have been served or given notice with a deadline running from Ventura to respond to Ventura's lawsuit. The goal is to get the court to stay that time.
Yeah.
Allowing additional time for settlement.
At least another six months, thinking that that would be of an opportunity to settle this without adjudication. Okay, so, anything else on that?
I just want to get those statements in the record. That we're on the side of where the governor's going and collaborative voluntary agreements are what's being pushed by the state regulators at the highest level.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is.
Do you want to call Ryan Becken?
Oh, yeah, Ryan, if you're out there on channel eight, come on back. I think it was channel.
We don't have to.
I don't know. Marlon, review.
Okay, the next topic is designation of a voting delegate for the Southern California Association of Governments. So, do we have nominations or volunteers?
Well, I did go last year. I'm willing to go again if nobody else wants to.
That'd be great.
It was actually, it's really nice.
Okay. Are you a SCAG representative, too?
I am not. I am not.
You just like Palm Desert, huh?
I do, well, I've been there, I've been there a few times.
Okay, well, are there any other volunteers or nominations? If not, uh.
Randy was gonna go with me last year, but he didn't.
Okay, then.
It looked good.
Without objection, Ryan is designated to be our voting delegate. Okay, next item, mid-year budget update. This is, I understand, a high-level, this kind of flyover, but.
Yes, thank you, and we have just a few slides if you'll indulge me. I'll keep it very brief, but just wanted to pull a couple of, thing, highlight a couple of facts. It is just a high-level mid-year budget update. We did the October budget revise earlier this year and had said, you know, essentially in October, we didn't have enough information to really project any change from our adopted budget. So, this is now coming back with more information and we are able to make some projections. At that time, we noted that the city had adopted a budget with a $55,000 funding gap. The good news, and that's the budget that's shown before you, but the good news is that recent projections are showing that the funding gap is projected to be closed. We've, as the staff report noted, we've had, been able to manage some vacancies and some contract savings. And then we've also see that revenues are projecting to exceed the budgeted amounts. And with those two facts, or those two items, we're expecting a balanced budget. Now, the bad news is that we're still not projecting much of a surplus, which means that this year, we will probably, we aren't projecting that we will be catching up anymore on the general fund reserves, which has been a challenge for us in recent years. Good news is we're not going to be digging into them, but we need to still grow them. And so, this slide indicates that, as everybody's aware, we have a 50% reserve policy, which, under the current budget, means that we would, we've committed to have $5.1 million in reserves. We are not at $5.1 million. A little bit more good news is we actually went up from $3.48 million to $3.68 million at the end of last year, and that was included in the audit documents, the financial statements that were part of the packet as well. But with, as we're currently projecting, we're not projecting an increase to those reserves at the end of 2020. Uh, you know, minimal from earnings.
Like 30,000.
Probably like 30,000, yeah. And with the budget being projected pretty tight, we just, you know, it's.
Yeah.
So, it's, we're essentially balanced, which is good, but we aren't adding to savings. And so, there are two key issues that we just wanted to point out at this time. And the two key issues that we wanted to make everybody aware of is that we haven't met the reserve policy. And then, and many analysts are starting to talk about recession and possible signs of recession. Governor Newsom's most recent budget talked about a potential recession. So, it's just something we need to be aware of and working towards closing that gap in the reserve. And then, second is, we still, we keep balancing our budget without catching up on deferred maintenance, which the big step that we have taken to try to correct that issue is Measure C, which is on the ballot March 3rd. But, and let me just briefly say, people may have seen this list online recently. These are deferred maintenance projects. And so, when people, people have asked, "What would the city do with a million and a half dollars a year?" That's a lot of money, and it is. But we anticipate, we're projecting that just on deferred maintenance, we have over $20 million worth of projects.
I would argue it's not a lot of money for a city.
Yeah, 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 definitely. But, so it's, you know, it would take, even with Measure C, it would take quite a while to catch up on all deferred maintenance, but without it, we're balancing out every year. We're not, we're not catching up. And then, this doesn't even get to the list of, you know, the projects that we want to do, like the fun things, like, you know, some of the Boyd Center improvements and things like that. Yeah.
Water slide.
That's way down the line.
Recreation.
Well, we're putting in another pickleball court?
One thing that we can look at here, when we start looking at stormwater drainage, rehabilitation, and water conservation, you know, the grant funding that we're doing with Aggressive should technically be added to, you know, should be subtracted from that to a degree.
Yeah.
So, it's, you know, it's a small number, but still, it's significant.
Yeah, and that's, that's the thing, is we, we're trying to get better at leveraging grants and pursuing grants, and we've been applying for them more frequently. So, there's, we are doing more than just sitting back and hoping that Measure C passes, but that will be a key part of this, of making progress on catching up. So, you know, in a nutshell, the budget's balanced, which is good. We haven't really saved more money, which is a challenge we need to address, and we still have deferred maintenance we haven't caught up on. So, that's really the mid-year high-level budget.
Susan?
If Measure C passes, does it start right away, the increase? When, could you just clarify that?
I believe it starts 30 days after results are ratified, but.
Uh, I think the new state rule is 10 days, but yeah.
Oh, 10 days.
And then, there's always a bit of a accounting catch-up period.
You gotta, it's gotta be a month that they collect it before.
Because the hotels, I believe, pay quarterly. So, there's a bit of a catch-up process. But certainly by Q3 of this year, if it passes with the voters' approval, we'll see additional funding.
Okay, thank you.
And so, we had another slide, I won't take much more time, but the, a slide just with information on Measure C and noting that it is the hotel tax increase paid for by hotel guests. It's an increase from 10% to 15% for capital improvement and maintenance projects. It's on the ballot March 3rd. And with that, that's the end of the presentation.
Bill?
The question's slow.
Thank you very much. You know, a lot of it is gonna, you know, a lot of further discussions will happen after we find out what the voters decide, whether they have confidence in our stewardship of their funds, or the visitor funds. I just want to caution something to please keep an eye on. Informed opinion generally states that the fatalities in China are dramatically understated, that the scope of this pandemic is much wider than the Chinese government is allowing to be understood by the rest of the world. A lot of containment efforts are going on, but this, you talk about recession. This could be the black swan, and I don't mean to be overly alarmist on this, but it bears watching to see how this thing, because it's pretty clear that the, you know, the Chinese economy is all but shut down right now. And we need to just keep aware, cognizant, and watchful of developments in that respect.
And then, the points that I like to make is the invisible debt that local governments have. One is through deferred maintenance. One is the unfunded liabilities of things such as pension costs, although we're doing pretty well at sort of holding the line on those things, but it's still out there. And then, you have the increase in cost of goods every year as a percentage of operating costs and labor. And so, we should be looking at the percentages as opposed to just the dollars, because I think one of the good decisions we made as a council was to take the cash that came in from the old redevelopment agency that was really repaying the taxpayers who loaned the money to the agency. So, that cash is in our reserve now. That's dollars to be spent, but it was already there as an asset on the books. And so, we converted a receivable, something we expected to get, into cash. As long as we keep looking at it that way, you know, it's easy for people to forget that that's not new money. That's whole money coming home. And so, we need to look at it in terms of what, how much does it, does our annual budget increase in operating expense versus the annual increase in revenues and paying down the? And that's a, that's not something that us politicians like to look at, because that says you can't spend as much as you'd like to. But it is, I think we've, in the last couple of years, we've done really reasonably well compared to some of our neighbors.
Yes.
And that's, though, without a recession, and it's coming.
They just need to watch, watchful.
Yeah.
Bill, I didn't know where you were going with the coronavirus thing in the budget item, but now you got it, you tied it all together.
I'm tied, yeah, that's, I'm just.
Yeah, when he started, I thought he was gonna ask to put money into the health budget.
No, no, I'm just worried about the impact on the revenue side.
Hey, there's, you know, the macro level of things, that's how it works. We need to be prepared.
We did get a, kind of an alert that they think it will, it will impact every country's budget, your economy.
There's, it's an interesting thing, just viruses in general, there's still more people that die of the flu in the United States. I mean, it's not to minimize this, but we still have lots of diseases out there that are killing us.
I'm more concerned about the ripple effect of the Chinese economy shutting down.
Well, local being sensitive.
Hopefully, local tourism is insulated from that.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Not if they work at the port.
We got a president working on that, don't we?
Hell, the state of New York suing the president over his latest improvement where he's not allowing people to come across the border. Okay.
James, be careful on your next.
Legislative platform, James, what do we got here, city?
Yeah, I can keep this one very brief. What, it's a new initiative that we wanted to recommend to the city council. Other, other cities have what's called a legislative program, and it's a program of the city's positions on important matters. You know, for example, you know, our city will support, you know, environmentally focused initiatives or, you know, different, there's different examples, but other cities have these programs. And the intent of the program is it's basically a pre-approved list of items that if staff is contacted asking for letters of support or opposition, we can react immediately based on them being pre-approved. It allows us to respond quickly. It means every item doesn't have to come to council for approval on an opposition or support letter or a grant application, for example. And so, we wanted to try to develop one. I think the, probably the challenge is going to be kind of crafting one that we think that we all will support. So, we have drafted a draft version of one, and what I asked for at this time was asked that council would, there's, there's different ways you can proceed, but I had suggested creating an ad hoc legislative committee with two council members to review that draft program and make any suggestions, and then we'd bring it back to council for adoption.
Okay, do we have any interest or volunteers for the legislative committee?
I will say this, I do not want to do it, but I did read it. I'm already.
That's half the word.
No, that's, I'm denominating myself, in case that was a question.
It doesn't work that way.
But I did read it, and I, I actually thought this was from before. I didn't know this was new.
We did it from scratch. Gail and I worked on it, and I think it actually is pretty, pretty solid.
I have to admit, I read all of it, and I thought, wow, it was pretty well done. So, I, other than us reviewing it, I wouldn't think we needed a separate committee.
I'll volunteer for it, but how, what is the staffing time and level that you perceive this taking?
Well, so, the idea is, this was the, this was the bulk of the work. After this, once council approves the program, then all, all it means is that those letters of opposition and support that we would have written anyway don't have to have a staff report to council with them.
When VCOG sends an email and says, "Send a letter," rather than have to ask.
That's what I was gonna relate to, is VCOG has a director that does that. That reads legislature or gets information and then sends out a notice in support or.
And what we're doing is providing the guiding principle so that the manager can respond quickly.
Yep. I'll make a motion, I'll make a, for what it's worth, I'll make a motion to approve it as it is, with us being able, obviously, to amend it at any time we want under immediate notice. But I, unless Randy, I don't want to.
Johnny and I are gonna do it.
Okay, well, if you guys want to do it, can either then, then by no means.
You're gonna go through this list, these lists?
We'll, we'll bring it back at the next council meeting.
Yeah, we can get it on the next one.
And I agree with Ryan, I think.
Then we'll wait, we'll put it on.
I'm really impressed that this was from scratch. I didn't realize that. Good job, James.
You'll just review it, you do too.
That's right.
And Gail, yeah, thank you, Gail.
Thank you, Gail.
Gail, Gail running, Gail running for my seat next election. Gail pro temp.
So, Randy and I will be the ad hoc committee if there's no objection to that?
No objection.
Okay. All right, that takes us to, what's, council reports? Susan, you have a report?
Another report, I just want to apologize, I didn't pay full attention to that, when, about the motion process.
Oh, that's okay.
I got a little bit discombobulated. Sorry about that, yeah.
Randy, do you have anything to report that you want to make? Okay, I don't have anything.
I was at, I was at APCD today. There's not a lot of new information, but we are working through a kind of a new round of grant money that's available and some review of that, and I'll be bringing that back. James and I still need to set an appointment with Locky that we're working on, but that was nothing, nothing super. Oh, one thing I will say, and Susan, you're gonna love this too. I want to bring this up because I think it's the coolest project, and I will only take a second, but there, you know, the county of Ventura has a program called Save the Blue Whales and Save the Blue Skies. And what it does is it incentivizes giant tankers that are traveling through the Santa Barbara Channel. This is a co-partnership with Ventura and Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control Districts that pays them for staying under 10 knots while they're driving, while they're, while they're, while they're transporting goods through the chain, to the channel. And under 10 knots helps that a lot of the whales that they end up striking do not die because of it, that they found that at that speed it helps. But it's also reduced pollution significantly out of the engines. And the biggest, the community that has received the most benefit from that is the Ojai Valley because those tankers are one of the key, because we don't have a ton of vehicular traffic out on the 101, but there is enough to make a difference. But it's those tankers that slowly, that would go by at 15 and cause all the pollution that would end up in the valley. By slowing them down to 10 is one of the reasons our parts per million have gone down and are trending that will be consistent with the federal levels. And I just think, I said it today at APCD, it's just one of those things that you very rarely in this job get to talk about creativity. The bang for the buck on that, the dollar-for-dollar savings is unapproachable with other investments. And it's just one of those things that's really cool. It's thousands and thousands of trips each year. People don't realize that at any given time, there's one or two or three tankers that are about to move through the Santa Barbara Channel, and only because we're in partnership with one of our neighbors, Santa Barbara County. But those are the really cool, creative things that every once in a while you get to talk about, and I just want to share it.
Is APCD paying?
Yes, APCD between the counties are paying it with money that comes through the state and other- Yeah, and I don't remember exactly where the funds trace to, but that particular program is very widespread. We had a presentation today about a number of the projects that are going on, but that one is just my personal favorite. And it's, and by the way, it's only ever been described to me as limiting the amount of pollution. I found out a lot more today about that it was designed to help save the whales, too. And the whales have a real hard time because they have no predatory instinct of evasion because there are no predators for the big giant whales in our channel. So, they don't really move away from things quickly. So, these boats, they'll just be on a straight thing, and you can see the leading edge of some of these huge tankers is 40, 50 feet in front. And sometimes, these tankers will end up coming back to port, and there'll be a whale, you know, on the front of it. Because they can't get out of the way, and they found that when they, when they only go 10 through the channel, it's significantly helpful for that, and the pollution's way down. It's kind of a no-brainer. And it's just a really, I just think it's one of the really cool projects to get to work on.
Bill, do you have anything?
I can't top that.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's a good story to end on, yeah. James?
Just quickly, I wanted to try to continue the trend of listing some of the items that will come to the next meeting. We will have the standing item for the water adjudication. We'll continue to do that. We plan to bring animal keeping back. That one may have a decent amount of people turn out for it, so we'll try to do that early in the meeting. And then, we'll hold a spot right now for the commission attendance item and the pesticide letter item. And we're working on the food waste ordinance. That's another thing we'll try to bring back.
Got more information for thinking about that.
Yeah. Matt, do you know when that is implemented? Is it, do you say 2022? Do you know more about that?
Not off the top of my head, but we're working on an analysis. We'll get that to council.
Thanks.
I think it's, it's not this year, there's a-
Did it just pass?
There's a window. It's one of those ones that passed a little while ago and had a long lead-in, but we'll get some details.
The pesticide letter is my revised letter. Is that what I'm hearing?
It's, everything just keeps coming up ahead of it, I don't know.
We gotta make a commitment.
It's not, it's not growing as fast as it's supposed to.
Take out the holidays, okay?
No, it wasn't that, it wasn't that long.
You're gonna get extra credit for being more timely, but that's okay.
I will say this, I don't want to over-prioritize it, James, but I, I think on that composting issue, especially if it's going to be law soon, I personally, if anyone agrees, I'd like to see us try and implement that maybe beforehand, maybe before it has to go into effect. That's our, that's kind of our MO.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And it also interacts with the county of Baldwin roadside.
But-
Mayor?
Working with the county on the Baldwin roadside.
So, let me touch on that. We're, Bill and I are in conversations with an organic recycling center out of Santa Barbara.
Yeah.
And one of the things that they do right now in Santa Barbara is composting.
They do composting.
So, and it's in the CUP of the existing site, and they're right now talking with the County of Ventura regarding it.
It's within the existing CUP, so.
We more than likely will be coming back, Bill and I, asking the council for a letter of recommendation, but they initiated composting and green waste recycling in Santa Barbara.
Randy's visited their site, and it's very well-run. It's right downtown Santa Barbara without complaints.
In fact, I got product in the back of my truck, if anyone wants to.
If you need a banana peel.
Yeah, and the Western Cities had an article on all this organic, and when it's kicking in. I guess Bakersfield is-
Really?
Yeah, I, who would have thought?
Bakersfield, yeah.
They got some of the worst air, but they apparently got a really good program when it comes to the-
Every Sunday, I put out my little white plastic-covered bin with peelings and everything just in front of my little gate. And Jeff Otterbine has this bicycle compost service. They come on a big bike with a cart, they dump my, into something in their cart, and he just goes all over the valley.
Well, that's new to me, a bicycle compost service.
Yeah.
Very Ojai and very cool.
San Francisco.
Are you sure that's not rations squirrels that are picking that up? Have you observed them?
Even if we're not first, you know, being a week early than when you have to be is kind of our MO, so, you know, whatever we can do.
It's very local.
Wonderful.
Future agenda items?
I think you just went through it.
Yeah, that was it.
That's it? Okay.
Well, I had a couple of these I just wanted to touch on real quick, Mayor. So, we did do the-
Too late. Oh, go ahead.
We did talk about the recycling, but Saturday, they actually had a meeting at Sarrazo di Park, and they had a demonstration of battery-operated equipment. Now, I had put together a list of six types, and they, is it Dan from?
Oh, the Green Zone?
So, he came out, and he was actually meeting with local gardeners.
Wow.
Demonstrating this equipment. So, there's a buy-in that's taking place right now.
That's great.
But he brought out, and again, we talked about being able to replace equipment or repair equipment in a timely manner. Aqua Flow's gonna do it with a certain type of equipment. Oxnard is gonna do it with-
Greg's rent stuff is ramping up, too.
So, everyone's ramping up. And then, I was in Aqua Flow in Santa Barbara today, and they are selling Husqvarna equipment out the door faster than they know it. They, they can't keep enough product in stock.
All right.
This is really catching on. It's moving forward. And I just wanted to touch on the solar audit we did agree to do, and we're in touch on that?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm pleased to report that my solar operation is to be inspected by the city this week.
Oh, wow.
Battery, battery backup.
Who do I pay off to cite him?
Which way you want to go? You want a glide path, or you want a control for the mayor?
No way, I want to raise hell with him.
Quit, bro, no.
Okay, thanks, everybody. We're done.